Franklin County Board of County Commissioners is now in session for this regular meeting, February 6, 2024. It's good to see everyone here this morning. We have a pretty hefty agenda, so we're going to get started. If you would, let us please stand. Commissioner Crum, can you lead us in the prayer and pledge, please?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you for putting us in this position to serve our county. God, we ask you, if any, let us put all agendas aside and do what's best for this county while keeping you first. In the name of your Son, Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, literate, just as a law.
Okay. Mr. Crum, is there anything that needs to be added to the agenda before we approve it?
No, sir. Not a, Aaron, our reports have not changed, so no one else has submitted anything else.
Okay. So I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as it's been published. All right. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Amerson. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Up next is approval of amendments and payment of the county bills.
Seminole.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Amerson. Any discussion, Commissioners? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. All right, so next we're up to public comments. I have a couple. I'm just going to take them in the order I have on. I think Ms. Jordan is on the line via Zoom. She's the first one I picked up. Her phone number ends in 1549.
All right. And she's unmuted. Mr. Chairman.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is Debbie Jordan of Lanark Village. Just real quick, I wanted to touch base on some things that I had asked for in the past, but I want to make sure that it's still out there for consideration. Regarding Lanark Village, as you know, it's a very condensed community. The parking is at a premium and can be quite problematic. I, we have first responders who have trouble finding houses. We have renters and vacationers, deliveries that have trouble finding addresses. A couple of years ago, I had recommended considering in the middle of the road a yellow line putting 12-inch-high letters or numbers with the row number with an arrow pointed toward the left or an arrow pointed toward the right, along, right along the center line with the arrows. That way, you're not infringing on anybody's house, and that way, the, the numbers can be seen by delivery drivers, EMTs, fire trucks, the whole shebang. And that, that's the one thing, and I wanted to again mention traffic flow because, like I said, it's crazy. Parker Street is very dangerous. It's so crowded, you can't even see the pulling or out of your space. And I ask you again to please consider traffic flow to go from 98 up Heffernan to go northbound, and from Parker to, toward 98 to go southbound. This would allow for angled parking, more spots, and delivery trucks not blocking your road. That's the big thing that I have in mind. I know you really aren't supposed to answer a question, but I would like to know. I have looked all over the site. You cannot find a Zoom meeting link or ID for the 3pm P&amp;V comp and workshop, and I don't know where to find that. Michael, if somebody could text back to me, I'd really like to have that information. I tried for quite a while to find it, and that's, that's all I have. I know you have a hefty meeting, so I thank you for your time.
It's the same one.
Yeah, I think it's the same link, Ms. Jordan.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll be the exact same link. That's why there's not two separate ones published.
Thank you. I've not done it that way before, so I appreciate your help with that, Ricky.
Not a problem. Yep. All right, Ms. Lynn Wilder, here with an update.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is an update on our Keep Franklin County Beautiful nonprofit status activities. So as you know, from December, when I presented, we have several steps left before we become a Keep America Beautiful affiliate, and one of the big steps is doing a litter index assessment throughout the county. And this is a process that's used by Keep America Beautiful and all the affiliates in the United States. So we can look every year to see if we're making an impact, where the problems are maybe worse than others, and maybe we use those as a plan to start working on things and seeing how we can either educate folks or, you know, figure out a way to, to reduce the problem. So we, we selected, as the folks tell us to do, we selected five locate, five areas in Franklin County. We, we picked the districts, because there were five, and then randomly select 10 locations in each area. And we, we drive around and rank what we see from a scale of one to four. One is being minimal to no litter, four is being extremely littered. And what we found, I'm not going to summarize every location, but we do run the gamut of one to four throughout the county, and that's not unexpected. So, and we are planning another list. We do this annually. We're also going to do one.
Responder for over 16 years. Randy Taylor and his wife, who are full-time residents with full-time jobs, have taken on a lot of responsibilities as first responders. They have EMR training, firefighter training. We do a lot. We respond to calls at any hours. Most of the calls are not at convenient times. I'm going to go through a list, as my wife suggested, of some of the medical calls that we've received at our home. Missing children, missing adults, people fighting, car crash, car flipped, car on fire, people having trouble breathing, people can't get up, people fall in a shower, people bleeding from leg cuts, head cuts, myriad of cuts. A person fell down the stairs, a person fell off a house. That was a contractor that was three stories up. Other contractors falling off of buildings. Of course, possible strokes, simple things, catfish, stingrays, not so simple, missing kayakers. And of course, COVID set up a whole nother value lesson for us. People problems breathing. I sent a neighbor out in an ambulance. He didn't make it back. Of course, with COVID, the fear that I brought to my wife coming home, that I might expose her. That was just the first responders. Fires are a whole nother animal. I was at the Lanark Fire. A lot of our team was at the East Point Fire. We're not just helping alligator point. Calls can be as basic for fires as a fire alarm going off. It's 3:00 in the morning, we still go. Training for fires is a lot of effort. Just driving a truck, 5,000 gallons in that truck, you have to learn how to handle that appropriately. It takes time. Hydrant training, hose training, lots of equipment, lots of, of training. This Saturday, I'm going for a couple of hours, again, for three hours at least, of training on what to do. Again, Cheryl, we do a lot.
Sir, please address the board. Thank you.
When Edbrun represented the S-curve ramp issue, it's because it was dangerous. I don't want to get a 911 call there. It can be prevented. It's a safety issue. There was a call last year with a potential drowning at one of our beach accesses. A visitor for, to our beaches. FWC came out. They said they had nowhere to launch. None of our ramps were viable for them to launch. I went to the marina. I found a neighbor that was filling up his boat with gas. He took me out to help for the search. We do a lot. We're not being petty. We're not asking for your help for petty issues. They're real issues. The S-curve ramp is also dangerous. The Chip Morrison Beach parking is dangerous. During summer, the drunk FSU kids speeding from our beach accesses, missing the turn at the old firehouse are dangerous. When we ask for help for our county, it's generally a safety issue. Saying, "What are you doing?" was not respectful to your audience. I expect an apology. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for your service, Rudy.
All right, that was it with public comments. Then we're going to department directors' reports. Mr. Howard Neighbors.
Good morning, Commissioners. How y'all doing?
Well, good.
We, basically, last couple of weeks, you know, last month, this fight in the weather, so we've had a lot of rain. Well, just about every week, it is raining, floods, so we had a few calls, not a whole lot about the flooding, but, you know, the whole county is saturated with water, so, and hopefully, we get some pretty weather to dry up. If not, I think they called for a lot more rain Sunday. So, 67 at the county line where that water is running across the road with Commissioner Sanders, it is under, it's starting to undermine. We're getting holes in that pavement, so I don't know what the, what it's going to look like once they get to and open the, the stuff up with the water to drain, so, but we definitely going to have problems, probably 40 or 50 foot of that road in that area where the water is running, including that area where the water is running across.
So, but Phase 4, I don't know where that's at because we've got some issues with it. So, we'll just have to wait and see. How, we'll just have to keep it at the best we can.
Yes, ma'am, we'll do it. And also got, which I talked to Mr. Ted and Commissioner Amerson with the ditches and stuff at the airport. We got the Dozer, and we've got a lot of the roads completed, but they're going to have to have about three cover pipes to put in them ditches to be able to cross, to keep everything moving. So, and it's going to be a 224-inch pipe, 20-foot, and 136-inch pipe, which is about $1,000 apiece. So, I don't know if they want to try to get the pipes or wait or how, how they want to do it, so.
That'd be something, are you saying that some, if the airport could get, needs to get the pipes to have them installed? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir. But we install it if they get the pipe. Yeah.
Okay.
And that, Mr. Chairman, that'll come out of the airport budget, right?
Yes. Okay. Well, with it being that, that amount, that's something the airport should be able to take care of themselves, right? It's not some super amount of money that we need to take board action.
I, I would hope, but if, we'll bring it back if needed.
Okay. Yeah, I think, I think we need to go and get the pipes and get them installed.
We'll do it.
You don't want to say anything for Mr. Howard?
Mr. Chairman, I do. I've got actually a couple of things. One is, you know, I, a meeting or so back, I asked for some new signage in my district because some of the signs were fading, and there were other aspects of things that the road department, safety-wise, I, I felt like needed to address. And I've contacted Ms. Virginia and talked to Mr. Howard about it, and it was done like that same day or that, that day after. So I appreciate y'all's time, effort, and getting stuff done and getting it done quickly and in a timely manner. I really appreciate it. In addition to that, I don't know, did you want to bring up?
You could. I've got the gun range. I was going to say.
Yeah, since it's here, because I don't, I don't want Mr. Howard to have to wait the whole meeting for, if that's okay.
My intention was to bring it up while he was here because you guys, they say you wanted to defer all discussions that we had at the last meeting until he was here, Howard was here. So, he's here, and now is the time for us to do it, and then you guys, direct staff as to what next, basically, you know? But you, you guys wanted to make sure Howard was safe. Well, he felt safe about where we're thinking about putting him.
Mr. Chairman, before we do that, the other thing is, and I didn't talk to you about this over the phone, and I forgot, but there was some issues with an area in my district that's a safety concern. I didn't know if maybe we could decrease the speed limit. I know we have to do certain things before we can just change a speed limit on a county road or?
Depends on where the road is and what kind of speed it's trying to talk about.
Can I get with you for the reading?
Yes, yes, yes. All right. So that, that, I'll get with Attorney Schuler on that, and then I'll circle back with you on that. And then, if you want to bring up the shooting range.
Yep.
So, so Mr. Howard, as a lot of people know, I've, I've brought up many times in the past about the shooting range behind the Humane Society. It's a safety issue. We looked at some property behind your road department shop. We decided that wasn't going to be conducive because of the shop being right there. So, and Michael, I don't know if you could pull it up on the map, if that'd be too much trouble, but there's 55 acres that we own of Highway 65 that we felt might would be a most, the most logical place to put it, your, your road department there. So you can see, you've got all that property there, and what are your thoughts? You care to share?
I don't know exactly how far the school property goes north, but it goes farther than what's cleared.
Yes.
And, and you got a bunch of swamp heads and a lot of wetland in that area, too, off 65 going east through there. And you don't want to put it too close to the jail. I mean, you got your lifeline and all that stuff lands in that field out there, and people get hurt. And if you go back to north, then, you know, we got all our big fuel tanks, and, I mean, anything could happen, but, but I know we need a shooting range. I know, and they want that one moved, but I don't know if that would be the best idea to put that there. I don't know if that would be the best idea to put that there, so.
Okay.
So I would say we don't know what we don't know. I think we need to try to do a wetlands delineation and see if there's a spot that's closer to the southeast corner than it is anywhere else that's usable, and leave a, a tree line around it on the south and see if that's possible. Because I mean, really, not trying to diminish anything, but I think if we can get something similar to what is over here in Appalachia, maybe with a few improvements, we'd be way ahead of the game with the way the berms are set up and the way it's all done. And then again, you would have to get a, DOT would have to allow us to do a road cut from 65 to get into it, so. But you'll know when you get that wetlands delineation, it might say the only place that's usable is by them. You know what I mean? So that, we don't know what we don't know. We just have to find out.
What were you going to say, Mr. Howard? Did you?
Yeah, well, and then we'd have to build that road for, you know, the school area, too, for skating, you know, in case a storm or a fire or something, they needed to get out.
Yeah. They never did build that road, though.
Talking about the road.
They, they didn't build it all the way to, to the school, I don't think, did they?
No, they didn't. No, the, the, there's a state road that already goes through there because that's across state property. That's why they didn't.
That's correct. Yeah, we went in there and did a bunch of work through there.
Yeah, but it's, it's kind of blowed out. You ain't going to go very far down that road unless they've done something recently.
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Howard, where, Mr. Chairman, on the property, your road department property, where do you keep your fuel tanks mainly? Is it, do you kind of spread them out or are they?
They all together. They on the, probably, I don't know, I say 100 yards, 120 yards when you turn off 65.
That's an old picture. That picture doesn't even have the new building on it.
No, it don't.
So it's more, so the, the long building, the old building that's going parallel with, not parallel, but perpendicular to the road, the other one that's parallel is where the gas is at, right? The fuel?
Yes, that's correct. Straight back from the old building, kind of east, southeast of the old building that we got. That's correct. So, but then if you try to build it like you're talking about on that far corner, then you got, you got a long road you got to build. Here, we have to go through the middle of that block off of 65, so.
That's 55-acre parcel property.
And you talked about, you know, the shooting range in, in Appalachia. You know, we, the county built that shooting range for the public to be able to shoot, and I don't know what happened, but.
Yeah, I know. It's not new there today.
Yeah.
That probably won't end well.
Yeah.
Well, I appreciate your, Mr. Chairman, excuse me, I appreciate your input, Mr. Howard, because, you know, I, I'm trying to do what I feel like we need to do. It's been going on since 2018, and I'm just trying to, to make it safe, but also where people can use something that, that's safe for everybody and usable, and maybe a little bit better than what we have right now. So that's, that's just my goal, and I think getting a wetlands delineation will be the big first step, just to see, because as the chairman stated, it, it's not going to hurt just to see what we have and what we don't have. And, and not even if we decide to do something different, completely different with this property, we'll still at least know what's wetlands, what's not, what we have to work with and what we don't, so. But, but I appreciate it, Mr. Howard.
You're welcome.
So is that something we can take action on today? So, is that something we can take action on today? Do we need that delineation?
I would ask you to.
Okay.
And you, you want the entire?
Might as well.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, might as well.
Who, who, Mr. Chairman, is that done by, is that done by somebody? Dewberry can't do that. Does that?
I'll ask Aaron, see if Dewberry.
And do we have to go out for bids or? I guess it depends on how much it costs, huh?
Yeah, it depends on how much it costs. Hopefully it'll fall within where, at worst, all we do have to request three quotes and make a decision based on that, under the twenty-five, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay. Um, what was your, I'm trying to find your?
Oh, page twenty-three?
Twenty-three?
Yeah, item number one.
I wanna make sure I cover everything on this, so.
Yeah, I, I was very basic about that narrative.
Um, I, I think what we'll do right now is I'll make a motion to obtain RFQ or RFPs.
Just make a, make a motion, authorize staff to go out and, and do the, um,
Wetlands delineation.
And, and if we, if it's too much and we need to come back, we'll come back. But just give us that authority right now.
I'll make a motion for, to direct county staff to attempt to try to obtain a wetlands delineation study on this property.
Second. All right, we have a motion to approve this wetlands delineation by Commissioner Ward, second by, uh, Commissioner Kuhn. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Mr. Howard, I've got a question.
What you got?
And I'm not trying to nitpick you. Some of the days on the calendar, there's no numbers on it. Does that mean that was a zero?
Yeah, yeah, we, they've been days. We ain't got no inmates. That's correct. Some of them had the flu, I guess, or something. They didn't let them out for a week or so.
Okay. All right, we'll wait and see.
Yeah. Now, we had four this morning, but we were getting twelve at one time. And it's cut back down to four. And two and four, basically, is what we've been getting for the, and zero.
I might be completely off base, but it seems like when we have communication with them, we get a number of inmates for a good little minute and then it kinda just runs back down to nothing.
I tell you, they find all.
They have to complain to get them back to a regular level, you know? And that's, that's not conducive.
And it's the contraband. I, I mean, they, they found all these drugs and stuff. And once they find that, they, they pull them, so.
And, Mr. Chairman, as I've said it in the past, I know we looked at getting some, um, workers. We, we, we can't keep depending on inmates to do. And I know, Mr. Howard, with all this rain, I can't even imagine in all of you guys' calls that y'all are getting right now, um, in terms of the ditches and drainage and such. So, we can't continue to depend or rely on these inmates. And I've, I've said it ad nauseam at many meetings. We can't disservice our citizens by not having the appropriate staff to do what needs to be done just because we get zero inmates for the day. And Mr., I know that's hard for you to try to plan your day.
Yeah, yeah.
Because if you're thinking you're gonna get five inmates and you get two, then that decreases the amount of work that you get done. And that's just not conducive. I know we've done it for a long time, but again, as I said in the past, we've gotta for the future moving forward. I know nobody wants their taxes raised, but, you know, we gotta, we gotta serve our community and make sure that you guys aren't overwhelmed with, because y'all know y'all are already understaffed as it is anyway.
And, and, you know, we're getting twelve inmates there for a while until they found all that contraband stuff and that, that winded up, so.
Yeah. So, I know we had talked about getting some workforce folks, I guess. Um, did we ever?
No, we did not because if you remember, uh, I was gonna say Buster. Mr. Neighbors has said that he wanted, uh, opportunity to allow his employees to work overtime.
Right, right.
And, um.
And that's been working out somewhat good.
Through the, through the summer, yes, ma'am. We, we don't do it through the winter, but through the summer, we're working the prides.
Okay. I think we're.
Uh, the other thing I have, Howard, I'll try to get with you after the meeting. I want us to go look together at that covert at Hickory Dip and see if there's anything we can do, not necessarily with the covert, but with the shoulders around it until DOT gets to doing that project. They have the plans ninety-five percent complete.
Okay.
So, it shouldn't be very much longer, but until then, there might be some things we need to do.
Okay, I'll look at the shoulders. I know the road is real, uh, I mean, there really ain't much you can do because the road is basically like that and it just, it's on the end, yes.
But anyway, I'll, I'll get it with you.
Okay.
Anyone else? Mr. Howard, thank you for what y'all do.
Thank you, all commissioners.
Mr. Fonda Davis? Southwest Director?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
I had one action item this morning. Uh, white goods sales. Unfortunately, we had to discontinue the service with Cumber Enterprise Incorporated as of November fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three due to the fact that they're unable to provide the service for billing, loading and transporting our white goods in a timely fa, uh, matter to uphold our permit. So, I'm asking if, uh, would I be allowed to sell on a temporary basis our white goods to Emerald Coast Recycling who do bad business at Lewis Metal out of Panama City?
Is, are there any details with that, Mr. Fonda? I mean, I'm not trying to be nitpicky, but, uh, when we were doing it with, with Cumber before they got to where they couldn't do it, are we going to, just as a matter of knowing for us and for the residents, are we gonna be selling to Emerald Coast at half of what we were getting before? I mean, what, what are we looking at?
Yes, uh, it's, it all depends on the market, Commissioner. Uh, but right now, yes, it'd be half or either more. Uh, I was looking at the email trying to, I think it was like a hundred and twenty-eight dollars gross ton or either less than a penny a pound right now. And that would be them coming to us, picking it up and not billing, but we would actually have to load it. So, it, you know, that's, takes up space where Cumber used to come in and bill it on site and, and hold it all.
Okay. Well, you also have to, to keep our permit viable, we have to get rid of what we have.
That's correct.
Okay. I'm good with that.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question? Are there any other companies out there, uh, Fonda, or is it just Emerald Coast?
No, uh, Commissioner, it is, uh, it's another one in Panama City. I hadn't had a chance to reach out. Actually, Emerald Coast, Lewis Metal reached out to us. We did have one company come around years ago, but again, we had a contract with Cumber, so I didn't entertain and I, I don't have any information on them. But it, it is some, to answer your question, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, we, we had Cumber for years during that. Yeah. Okay.
Well, is, is the, the contract with Cumber just expired or they just refusing to fulfill the contract?
Uh, if you wanna use the word refuse, I would say refuses. It had expired. I shared it with, uh, Mr. Schuler here. It was back in eighteen, no, no, I meant eight oh eight, maybe. I can't remember the exact date, but that's an old contract.
Okay.
It's, it's old, old, so.
I tell you, we've been using them for a while.
Yes.
Yes, you're right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I wouldn't try to use a, a contrary of words or I just, a word that comes to my head, sorry.
Right.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion to allow Mr. Davis to sell his white goods to Emerald Coast Recycle.
All right, so we have a motion to approve, uh, the selling of white goods to Emerald Coast Recycle by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Kuhn. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
No.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Any other, sir?
Okay, I did receive a call on my way to the meeting from Mr. John Creamer of W.C. He said he would get up with you, Commissioner Ward, uh, to let you know. He's still researching, trying to find some help for the deer carcass containers.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Chairman, it's funny you bring that up because I did receive an email from him, uh, yesterday saying that he was still, uh, working on it. And he's, obviously, like we've all said before, the biggest issue is misuse of the containers and, and improper dumping and, and or closure of the container. He's gonna check in with some of the other rural counties to see how they address these issues and circle back with you. But I appreciate you guys getting together on that and we'll just keep, you know, if you get an update, let me know. If I get an update, I'll let you know. So, keep, keep our communication open.
Right. He did mention that, uh, I think it was Taylor County, one county that they have a fixed-in area, but they still had the problem of being dumped on the ground, so.
Yeah. It's, it's hard to, yeah. You try to provide a service and people abuse it and it's frustrating. But, um, Mr. Chairman, I've got one more thing from Mr. Davis. Um, I, I haven't posted yet. I've, I've been trying to wait for the project to not really completely be finished, but Vrooman Park, I've been going out there and checking on things. I went out there, it was Friday, and they were putting the sod down. And I, and the batting cage, uh, Ruth is over it now and Aaron's not here. But I just wanna tell her and you and everybody else, because I know you spent some money to fix up that part too. It didn't all come from this Firdap grant that we got. I called you up and I think you got aggravated with me because you, it's my budget. And I know you got other parts, but I know you took some money out of your budget to kinda help with the, the, um, upgrade of that. And, uh, I happened to go out there Saturday and there were some boys playing on the basketball court and they were talking about the lights. And so, you know, to see the youth out there playing and utilizing that park and there were people on the playground, it just, it brings so much joy to me because I'd rather see them doing that than on a computer, on a laptop, playing a game or Xbox or whatever, or, or doing something that they're not supposed to be doing with vandalism or su, and such. But I just wanna let you know, I appreciate it. I think it's gonna help in the long run with you, your parks and recs, uh, people because with the field being drained, drained par, properly, you're not gonna have to spend as much time out there working on it as you did before. So, I just, I, I'm, I'm very pleased and happy. And I'm gonna post some pictures later on of, of the, the sequence of events that have happened. But, um, I'm just tickled to death about it, so thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. I let the department know.
Is that project complete?
It's not completely complete, but I asked, I asked, uh, Jason White, uh, had some, some guys out there the other day and I'm like, you guys gonna be done before, before they start practicing ball? And they assured me that they would be. So, I, I, yeah, I've been keeping up with it and, um, because I have gotten concerns from the parents asking if it's gonna be done in time. So, they said that it was, so, well, we'll see. I think the fencing's the only thing left that, that needs to happen. I think Aaron, I'll have to get with Aaron, but I think that's sometime this month, I think, so.
Good. Did you have something?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, on the, uh, excuse me, on, on the, uh, the carcass wagons, I, I know it's, you, you know where I stand with that. I've said it publicly and I, I, I had this discussion with some folks the other day and somebody brought up a pretty good idea with that. Um, you know, that, I, me again, calling it laziness. They were calling it, well, it was probably too heavy for the people to lift up. But if next year we could figure out a way to build like some type of, uh, get some dirt or something in there where we can build that ramp up where people can back up and dump it in there, that might alleviate some, I, I, I say might, you know, I, probably not, but it may alleviate some of the carcasses landing on the ground, you know, and eliminate the issue of our staff having to get out there and try to pick up, uh, you know, dead rotten carcasses. But, uh, that's just something we can look at down the road because obviously the season's over. But, um, that's just an idea. So, the, the main thing in Appalachia is location. We really need to try, uh, to figure out somewhere else to locate it because buzzards and airplanes isn't very conducive at all. Doesn't go hand in hand. But, but anyway, that's just an idea for the future. We can probably figure out some way to, to build like a, some type of ramp where they can back up. I think that might help us some. Doubt it, but.
It, it probably will, Commissioner. I agree with you. Which go, the one in Carabelle and right up from the landfill, they sits on the ground. So, they could, the, the one here sits on a trailer, so it's a little higher. Uh, I meant, we see more on the ground here.
Yeah. But it, it, we don't have, I mean, not, we don't have a big of, of bear issue as they have over there. You know, ours is just the fact that it's not making it to the, from the tailgate to the,
Right.
dumpster, so to speak. But, but anyway, I, we appreciate what you do.
Mr. Chairman. One comment about that. The thing about it is when you've set it back out.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, for some reason, it's better than what it was before. Uh, it's not as much stuff around, you know, the carcasses are not around on the ground as much. But the bears do get into that though. And whether it's supposed to be bear-proof or not, the bears get in it and drag it. And, um, so if you can figure out something like that, and I, I, I think, uh, we have been doing it for a long time and now maybe it's time for FWC to put some money into it.
Hence.
And make it more secure or something, um, than what they are. I know one of the biggest eagles I've ever seen in my life, as Commissioner Amison says, the buzzard with the tuxedo, but it's a, it's an eagle because he's a, a predator. And he is sitting on that thing. It is the prettiest thing, uh, to see, but that's where he's getting his food from. It's right there. Uh, maybe we can do something better for next year.
All right, anyone have any thoughts for Mr. Davis?
I do, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Davis.
Yes, sir.
Are you, uh, your department responsible for maintaining of beach access signage on St. George Island?
Yes.
I don't know who idea that was, but it was, it was a good idea. Uh, I only had a chance to go to the beach one time last year and when I got out unloading the girls and seeing that signage there, I was like, it reminded me of my first responder days in Panama City Beach where, you know, when we have something going on, a drowning or something, they say the beach access number, we already know where the beach access, what beach access to go. So, that was a real good, uh, implementation whoever did that. So, just wanna say thank you and keep it up.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner, he also did, he also did it on Alligator Point, uh, Point Beach too. It's there.
And, Mr. Chairman, the, the signage at Carabelle Beach, I appreciate you putting that out too. I contacted you about that, so, yeah, they do a good job.
So, one other thing, uh, I don't know, the boat ramp on Highway sixty-seven had some complaints. I mentioned it to Mr. Maron, but.
Yes, I talked to, uh, Commissioner Sanders a, about it. I talked to Mark about it too. Uh, I, I mean, you guys tell me how, how is it used? How often is it used and, and, and what exactly? I guess, Commissioner, Mr. Davis, how, how do you want me to proceed with that? Because it's, there's no parking there at all. Um, I don't even see how they gain access to the ramp. They have to come out on, on the highway to back into it.
On the left side, there's always been a problem on the left side. When you get too close to the left side, if you don't watch it, you'll hang your axle up in it, be that for years. Um, because it was just a makeshift boat ramp and, um, it wasn't something that we went out to do grants for or nothing. It was just a makeshift boat ramp. It's always been there that I know of, that I can remember.
So, would you all like me to reach out to, Howard is right behind you, to have him look at it and tell us what he thinks? And then from there, I, oh, Howard Hines is right.
Yeah, we looked at that and I was gonna bring it up, forgot about it.
Mr. Neighbors, come forward please so we can all hear you.
Get him up to where you can hear it.
You're good. But we just wanna make sure we hear you.
Yeah, most of the time it happens on a real low tide. But we looked at that and there is a drop-off at the end of that boat, right where it ends. So, we'd probably, hopefully get some oyster shells or something with a good low tide where we could get out there and maybe can fix that area.
Yeah, 'cause that's in the creek.
Yeah. But most of the time, like I say, it's real low tide and they backing freighters off the end of that ramp and like, what's on that left side is a hole right. Yes, ma'am.
If you'll see, if, if you go out there, you'll see the concrete, the blocks of concrete all the way along the side of it. And, and I think what has happened over the years, people coming into that boat ramp and having a, you know, pop, uh, prop dredge, I mean, that's what you call it.
Yeah, loading the boat up. Yeah, loading the boat up.
To load the boat up, to prop dredge.
Yeah.
I think that's, that's what's happened to it. And, because on the right side it's fine, you just gotta know what sign it goes. We used to have a sign up there, use it at your own risk. But we don't have it no more.
That causes the complaints I'm getting, people, you know, using the word suit, so but anyway.
Yeah.
Probably won't be, use at your own risk?
Yeah, so.
Okay.
And then Howard's gonna try and use some oyster shell on the bad side, and if, if it gets worse, we might have to temporarily close it for a while until we can figure something out.
Okay.
I haven't seen anybody get hung up on it, but I'm not there twenty-four hours a day either lately. The last time we had something was around two thousand seventeen, eighteen, and a guy went out there and it ripped his axle out from underneath his trailer, but he just had a little fourteen inch trailer.
Yeah.
But to him it was a lot, and it was.
Yeah.
For him it was a lot.
So we'll go with that for now, but then.
Which way?
Uh, signage and, and Howard's gonna look at it, see if he can do a temporary fix, and if it's, that's not good enough, we'd have to close it temporarily until we decide what we're gonna do.
Yep.
All right.
That's the best I can offer.
Anything else for Mr. Davis? Sir, thank y'all for everything you do.
Yes, sir. Thank you for your support.
Yes, sir. Is anybody attended on behalf of Mr. Davis, I know she's not here today.
No, they're all, yeah, so.
And the same thing with Mr. Paulus, correct?
Yes, Mr. Paulus is not here.
So Commissioners, if y'all have any questions for either of the registered, you can just forward them, there's no, everything's informational about the reports, correct?
Yes, I, that's what I read.
Yeah, there was, that's what it was, uh.
And I did not receive a report, uh, which is odd, or a callback anywhere from, uh, Mr. Lofstrand, so I don't know if he's sick under the weather, I'll check on him after the meeting.
Okay. All right, so we'll go to Ms. Whitney Roundtree. Good morning.
Good morning. Um, no action items today, uh, I just wanted to give a big thank you to our, our friends of the Franklin County, um, Public Library. We just wrapped up our two big fundraisers, which were the soup, bread and book sales. Um, everyone worked really hard, we had a great turnout, so really grateful to them and all their hard work. Um, funds from that will go to funding our summer reading program and other library projects. Uh, the other big thing we've got going on right now is our pen to paper series at the Carabelle Ranch, um, that will go on through the months, I believe till May. We feature local authors and writers, so I would encourage everyone to check the calendar and come check that out. Um, and then we're happy to welcome back our non-resident, uh, cardholders, um, a lot of our seasonal visitors, they love the library. Um, we actually have three hundred and forty-one non-resident cardholders in our library system. A non-resident card is just ten dollars and, uh, the out-of-state visitors, they can still enjoy all of our wonderful digital resources when they return to their state, so a lot of people really enjoy that.
Anyone have anything for Mr. Roundtree?
Mr. Chairman, I do. Uh, Michael, excuse me, do we have an update? I know when we, the, uh, Carabelle Library caught fire, the plywood's sticking on the wall, I know it takes a while to get insurance payment to re, to fix something, is, or, can you give it, do you have an update on?
I don't, but let me, uh, A- Aaron will be here shortly, she's in her office working, we'll ask her.
I just sent invoice this morning, they actually just finished up the painting, um, it looks pretty good, the only thing is the old paint was pretty faded, so it doesn't match exactly. Uh, but other than that, it, it, she looks pretty good.
Okay, all right, thanks Whitney. Just want to make sure we got all that taken care of.
Yeah, they just wrapped it up, uh, yesterday.
Okay.
Good job.
Uh, Mr. Ron, while she's here, and it's about the library, did we, every year, things straightened out with the insurance stuff with these, what, bill, remember we were talking about insuring ourselves?
Yes, and Attorney Schuler and Aaron was working on, on that.
Cause we're in the process of assuming the building anyway?
Yes, we're waiting for, uh, AR, USDA.
That's right.
Too many acronyms, USDA to, uh, their, their legal team, they're doing the final review and they'll send it to us, so we'll assume the billing.
Okay.
We're already, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, we're already paying the insurance on there, right?
No, we were moving to pay the insurance, that's why I was making sure that we did do that.
Paying that for them.
No, that's what we were moving to, to give them some relief until we are able to assume that building.
Yeah, that's one of the reasons they wanted to kind of stick to what they like to do, which is the programs, and didn't really want to be involved with the building because the cost of insurance is going up astronomically everywhere, so, anyway, I just wanted to bring it up, I guess we're still in the middle of it.
Yes, sir. Process.
Anyone ha- have, else have anything for Mr. Roundtree? Ms. Whitney, thank you for everything y'all do, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Mr. Ted Mostepper?
Good morning Commissioners, Staff. Uh, you have my report of routine stuff at the airport, um, there, there are some other activities I'd like to mention, um, name, one thing is Scott is doing a magnificent job in repairing equipment, uh, building maintenance, uh, mowing, spraying, you name it, he's very busy. Uh, the rental dozer is working, uh, we were out there yesterday again and, uh, looking good.
Instead of looking, just like, I ran back there because I wanted to get an update. So the sheriff is donating in a Tahoe, twenty nineteen something, around that year, to the airport for Scott to use to, around the airport and to haul equipment when he has to. It should, we should have it by next week. He had to, uh, you know, remove all his lights, sirens, all that stuff that goes with, with those vehicles. The sheriff should be here next week so we could kind of thank him formally.
All right.
Not next week, next meeting, sorry.
Along with other Scott duties, uh, he repaired the roof, um, patched it on the FBO last week, and, uh, however, uh, the weekend rains proved that there are other leaks to be repaired, so we're waiting on a little bit warmer weather and no rain to get the stuff up there for that. Uh, and in others, airport news, we have the fire inspector inspected the fuel farm yesterday and found a few discrepancies mainly in some of the fire extinguishers and, uh, a, um, an estimate from them, uh, B and C Fire Safety Incorporated are, is pending. Uh, last week we had a FAA forum, a Zoom, and I was asked about wildlife on the airport, they're very interested in bird strikes and whatever, and of course, uh, our only problem at the moment and recently is, are the buzzards, and you, you discussed that a few moments ago, so, uh, that's still pending, uh, I know hunting season's over. I have had a couple of reports from some of the neighbors, however, of the wild hogs, which is not a real problem for us, but they are on the airport, and occasionally you go out there trying to mow and you found a, you find a, uh, plowed field where they brooded it up, they really do damage to the ground, but, uh, as far as aviation is concerned, they have not been a problem, and of course we have the bear. Do you have any other questions for me that I could address?
I just have a question based on what you reported, Mr. Ted. Uh, the, you said there was a fire inspector at the airport?
Yes, sir. They inspect once a year.
But is that, in other words, is that the, the company that, that does the servicing of the stuff, or is it somebody from the state?
Cause when you say fire inspector, I'm thinking of somebody that's got a little bit of clout
and.
They have clout, but they're not state.
Okay.
It's the company that does, uh, they do, I think it's the same company that does my fish house, they just come in and inspect your, your extinguisher. Yeah, but one question with that, Mr. Chairman, if you would.
Yes.
Now, you said that they just specifically inspected the hydrants around the fuel farm, or did they do everything, I mean, is that pieced out, or is it?
Well, the other issue would be with the FBO, and they supply the fire extinguishers on the trucks, so that's their situation.
Yeah, I understand, I just didn't know if we had other, uh, areas like around the tea hangars or something like that, that we may have to, uh, look at in the future, or since we're, have assumed the tea hangars now.
Uh, good question, however, I know of only the fuel farm.
Okay.
And that is part of the, uh, annual FDOT inspection coming up very soon, I don't have a date on that yet.
Somewhere around April?
Somewhere in that neighborhood.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions for Mr. Ted?
One item.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Ted, look at item F.
Yep.
What's going on with that, on the tea hangars and stuff like that? What's going on with, uh, Randall Terry stuff?
Randall Terry, uh, is renting that hangar complex, which is the eighty by eighty aircraft here, plus the office complex that goes with it, the one that was built for Dan Garlic.
Yeah.
Uh, he owns an airport up in, near Commerce, Georgia, and since his wife passed away last year, he has pretty well stayed up there. I understand he has closed down his cabinet sails, which was in the, he was using in the hangar, and, um, I'm not sure if there are any aircraft in there or not, however, he's in a twenty-year lease and we're halfway thereabout through it.
Okay. How far in the twenty-year lease are we?
Halfway thereabout, we have about ten years left.
I can remember when he did it, yeah.
It, uh, it is a controversial situation because, uh, until, except for when he comes down here, as far as I know, there are no aircraft in that hangar, which is against, uh, FA, uh, uh, FAA and FDOT regulations, because they supplied the money to build that hangar as an aviation hangar.
That's something we're gonna have to address later on, probably.
Yes.
Chairman, I have a question on that, regarding that, um, did I jump ahead of you? But, but, uh, regarding that hangar there, it, it, the Randall Terry hangar that we're discussing, isn't there, don't we need access to that hangar for that, uh, breaker box? There was some type of, I mean, you had a discussion on that at one time.
We had an issue there because we had, that, the power that's in there, which the county pays for, uh, supplied the power to operate the sewage lift station outside the building, and, uh, we had a problem back last year about that, and, uh, there was, I had trouble getting in the building to reset the breaker, however, in the meantime, uh, we have ordered and installed a, a, an electrical power pole out there, a trailer-type pole for that purpose, so we don't need that power for the lift station anymore.
Okay. And just, uh, uh, one more question, Mr. Chairman, as far as the hangars that the county rents out, and we've, and this is something I was gonna bring up, uh, or ask, ask you in a moment anyway, I'll go ahead and do it now, but, uh, with, with the tea hangar inspections, wouldn't these other hangars also need to be, uh, you know, inspected as well on behalf of the county?
Yes, sir.
To make, make sure that, you know, everything is kosher, so to speak, I mean, um, wouldn't, wouldn't, wouldn't that hangar fall into that as well?
It is county-owned.
And we don't have any keys to that hangar though, correct?
I do not personally, I don't know if it was included in the keys.
Yeah, I'll have to check, because I have the keys to all the hangars, but I didn't think about the Randall Terry.
Well, the easiest solution to that problem is, is, is we'll figure it out, and if not, we can send something from the county saying, "Hey, we need a copy of your keys," so we can, uh, you know, do safety checks, especially if he's not gonna be present, we don't know, you know, there may be something in there that we need to be aware of, so to speak.
Yes, sir. I don't know what's in that hangar, I have not been in it, other than when I see the door open and I can see from the outside, uh, in the past year or so, so, uh, I, like I said, I, I do understand he has closed down his cabinet sails, so, and there are very few times I've seen any activity around the hangar.
Mr. Chairman, I got something.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I had two questions, one, one was, uh, access to the hangar, which you already, access to the hangar?
Yes, sir.
Which you already answered, but, uh, second, this may be before your time, but is it common for us to do a twenty-year lease?
Definitely before my time, so I can answer that.
It's a good question, though.
It's a good question.
We're halfway into a twenty-year lease, that wasn't me.
I'll do some researching, get back to you, Commissioner, but, yeah, that's a very good question, that's all.
It's the way things used to go.
Well.
It's a new day.
I'll do that one.
There is activity going on to review all the leases.
Okay. You don't want to have anything else for Mr. Ted?
Um, well, this is kind of a group question, I guess Steve's kind of inching up here, but, uh, this would include him, Mr. Ted and Attorney Schuler actually, uh, but the tea hangar lease agreements, where are we at on that as far as, uh, have, have we gotten anywhere as far as the county assuming, we're, we're assuming the tea hangars, have we got our lease agreement set up? I know, um, last accounts I had, I think you, Attorney Schuler and, and Centric were reviewing what they had, I'm not, I don't know where that's at.
I think we're a step beyond that, Commissioner Amison, the, uh, I think they, they have in, uh, Centric has informed the board and myself that they have actually license agreements, not leases.
Well, that's.
Um, all the license agreements have long since expired, and so my recommendation was now that we've taken over the tea hangars for the airport board to review the matter, uh, and then let, let the board and myself know how they want to proceed, so as far as I know, as, as Mr. Ted said, they're still looking at those leases, uh, or license agreements, or however they want to proceed, right? But right now everybody's on it, just basically a month to month, and they can be terminated just with a thirty-day notice.
Okay, I guess the, the best way to clean that up would be for, I guess, you three to, to communicate on that and try to come up with some type of, of license, and, and also keep in mind with that, I think, you know, and I'm not, I'm just guessing here, but, you know, I don't know if, if one hangar, we, we need to come up with some type of, uh, um, uh, lease amount, um, and, you know, Centric may have been charging Mr. Schuler fifty dollars a month, they might have been charging Mr. Amison seventy-five dollars, but this is a government, I mean, this is a municipality hangar, we can't pick and choose what we want to charge somebody based on whether or not we like their smile. I mean, if they've got X mile square footage, I don't know how, how we're gonna base that rate off of, but it needs to be fair and transparent and, uh, you know, across the board for that. I know there was some discussion where we wanted to get with Centric, see what they were charging each guy, but there again, you know, it, it may vary, that's not fair, we, if we're gonna do this, it's like if you buy, rent a boat slip down there, you pay by the foot, doesn't matter who you are, we need to kind of figure out how we're gonna base that also off of, and let's move forward and get these, uh, get this cleaned up with the, with the licenses, not leases, but we'll use the term license.
Yes, sir.
Is that, is that, is that, is that good with everybody?
See, I think that's one of the issues that they were reviewing as a committee, uh, was exactly what you just said here this morning, so I, I guess you guys are still working on that.
I'll go over that in a minute.
Oh, okay, cool.
And in addition, you know, we've, we've all heard the FAA FDOT talk about fair market value for anything we have out at the airport, so that needs to be a consideration too as we create these leases or, or licenses, whatever we're gonna call them.
Anything else while we stay, Mr. Ted here, or we can?
I'm, I'm, I'm gonna wait until after Mr. Kirschenbaum, I have two items.
Okay.
Then we could take a break, cause I see Ms. Mayhew to the back of the room being patient at that one, so.
Okay.
Thank you, I'll stand by.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ted. Mr. Kirschenbaum?
Hello, everybody, Steve Kirschenbaum from the Airport Operations and Economic Development Board. It's nice to be back in front of you after three months, cause we skipped a meeting, but, uh, we've got a lot of stuff done, a lot of good things. You guys were just talking about the Randall Terry hangar, um, I made contact with him, had discussions, and I think if we sit down and talk to him a little bit more, he'd be willing to step out of that hangar, and it's an incredible hangar, he's got a twenty-year lease on this thing, but for the money he's paying, it's a storage unit, and he'll leave it like that for the next twenty years, so we'll work on negotiating with him and try to come up with something where he'll get out of that hangar. And the other thing that you were just talking about is on my report right now, but what we want to do with, uh, these license agreements, license agreements are incredible because they are giving someone the use of the hangar, not control of the hangar, so we want to give them license agreements, but in the past, license agreements have been from the airport FBO directly to the consumer. These are our hangars, we should have these license agreements, and that's one of our recommendations from the airport board, that these license agreements should be from the county to the user, which Centric as the administrator to collect the money, to pay the taxes and handle the money, and this way, they're our hangars, we're totally compliant with the FAA and the FDOT, and it just looks good, uh, for the county. So that's one of the recommendations, let me get my reading glasses on. Um, like the, it's our recommendation, the A, uh, A O E D, that all tea hangar license agreements are from the county to the tenant, which Centric acting as administrator, so that's one action item I'd like to take care of as a recommendation, or should we bring back the finished license agreements to you as, uh, as a commission and say, "Are you good with this through legal?" How would you like to do that?
I think it would be better to have, what, what are the finished products gonna be myself, because
Okay.
If we're making motions and votes, it, it doesn't really go anywhere, I just think that doesn't serve what we're trying to do.
All right, so wait till we have the finished agreement?
Yes, I think that'd be better.
Okay, great. All right, so also, um, Michael, a question for you, those two diagrams that I attached to my, all right, that's wonderful. Um, up in front of you, um, the telephone company wanted to put a repeater at the site, a tower at the site for telephones, um, we, as a board, looked at all the locations that this could possibly go. The cell phone tower, if it was put in the initial location that they had proposed, it would interfere with operations at the airport, and it would be dangerous and potentially close the runway, so we had John Collins from Avcon come up with a few different locations, and location number four down at the bottom of the screen is the perfect location for it, and that's the airport board's recommendation, that you go back to the utility that wants to put this cell phone tower there and say, um, "This is an unsuitable site, but would you look at this one?" And, uh, John Collins has all the information, and that's a recommendation from us, and I don't, I'd love, uh, an action item to kill the other location and.
Where's the other one they proposed, Mr. Steve, just so we know?
The one they proposed is on, it's not even on the picture, but it's on the bottom left. Do you see the bottom left triangle?
Uh-huh.
In the approach of the runway, on the prison work farm, which would be a bad thing for that runway's operation. So, I'd love someone to make a motion that we go forward with the other thing.
So the motion that the airport advisory board is asking for, based on their recommendation, is for the commission to agree for option four being the best option?
Yes.
And ask them the sale provider to consider that option?
Yes, and as far as the...
That's where we want it to be.
Yes, and as far as these other locations, John Collins said there's no roads to get to them, somewhat too close to populated areas, and he said that's the best bet. So, yes.
What about that, the between where, the line of sight from runway to runway as well?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Steve, tell me, where are we on your...
The very first one.
He circled back. He started with three.
The very first one, Michael.
Okay.
First bullet point.
First bullet point, where we are? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Ted probably answered his, but option four, there was a previous tower there at one time, correct?
Yes, there was.
Okay, so that's, I mean, really, that's the best suitable place to...
And all of the members of the board, who were pilots, all, we had them look at that and said, what is the most receptive place for you to pull into this airport, as you pull into other airports? And they unanimously said that's the place it needs to go. And John Collins actually agreed that that was one suitable sense.
What did that mean? I'm sorry.
No, you guys go ahead. I have a little cautionary thing I wanna say, but go ahead, and then we'll obviously make it to the end.
So, is there a motion from the board? What's the pleasure of the board?
I was gonna wait for Michael to go.
I'm sorry, I apologize. We're at the motion.
Yeah, that's where we're at, sir.
Here's the thing.
For the last five minutes.
Got a little lost there for a second. So here's the thing, keep in mind, the county has applied to Triumph for the same communication system that they have in Waukulla County, or similar one to it. And that application is moving along.
Yes.
What, and this has nothing to do with Steve or Teddy Airport, what I don't wanna do is give a prime real estate to somebody else's tower. And then that is a tower or a spot that the board, the county will own at some point. Because remember now, with this, with this project that we applied for with Triumph, the county owned the towers. You guys owned every tower that we put up. And AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, Verizon, whoever else wants space, they paid the county for that space on that tower. So, what Aaron and I are afraid of is that these companies are aware of that, and they're trying to beat us in a punch and try to get our spots. So, and I wanna be clear, I'm good with what the chairman, the chairman of AOEED is recommending, Mr. Kirschenbaum. That's fine. But before we negotiate directly with any tower company, can we have a discussion about that at a later meeting? You know, if you're just approving a spot today, I'm good with that. But please don't tie it into this specific tower company at the moment, is what I'm asking.
I've got a question. Can different entities coexist on the same tower?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, the key, that's the key with having, that's where you make your money with a tower.
I'll make mention of that.
Now, where are we at in regards with Triumph with this? I mean...
It's actually...
Timeline.
Yeah, when Erin, I know, 'cause we don't wanna cut off any access to broadband or both. I get that, commissioners, but when Erin comes in to do her report, let's have that discussion then. So, if we follow Commissioner Sanders, I think she wants to hold off on this, until we have that discussion, what I'm hearing, basically. And I'm fine with that. But I thank, I thank the AOEED for what they did. That's good. Now we know what to tell another tower company in case we hold off with that.
Commissioner, what's the timeline, like, with this? Are they, I mean, when we make a motion or table this today, is this gonna delay any kind of airport funding or any projects going forth right now?
No, I don't think it'll change anything. Oh, and one other thing to add to that, to Commissioner Jones, it has to be consistent with Part 77 of the FAA law. So this tower cannot exceed a certain height, and John Collins will help you with that.
Right.
Yeah, it could be tabled if you wanted to.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would say we need to hold off on it then. If there's no big hurry on it, until we find out a timeline for Triumph.
For the Triumph project, yes, ma'am.
Because we, we want the money for the county, if we can get the money for the county.
Okay.
You see what I'm saying?
Well, to clarify, I agree with what you're saying. So, this is what Mr. Ralph Thomas, Quincy Mr. Smith, commissioners from Waukulla have told me, Waukulla County. So, when they're doing that, the reason they wanted the county to have the towers and have some way to make some small amount of money off of it, that amount of money they're taking in is now used to maintain the towers. So you'll have to come up with another source of funding to maintain what the Triumph grant's paying for, it has built-in funding mechanism, just for maintenance.
I think, I think it would be good on our part to just hold off on it and see what Triumph says.
Yeah, because we now keep this recommendation from the AOEED in our back pockets. We know where to put it, if, you know, if and when we get this project approved.
Yeah, but it's very important that we get this funding from Triumph for this project.
And Commissioner Ward, I realize, we're walking a thin line between, 'cause I know you, this is a big thing for you, a thin line between broadband access and having a county-wide project. I understand that. We're trying our best to navigate our way through this, to, you know, make the best decisions as we can.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I was gonna say, if you've got the number of this person who wants to put up a tower, give them my number, 'cause I wanna talk to them. I want one up 65. We need one up 67.
Well...
So, I know this is...
There's other places that, yeah, other than the airport.
Yep. So, I can tell you what I found out the other day. If you have T-Mobile, I was talking all the way through till I got up about almost a Highway 12. Not a problem. I was talking to Mr. Morong the whole time.
It has improved since they put that repeater on.
Well, if you have T-Mobile. My Verizon phone was a brick.
Yeah, one of my coworkers' employees in there, they weren't in the woods. And they said they basically had T-Mobile coverage all through, while they were there. That shocked me, you know. But I'm glad, I'm glad, Commissioner, I'm glad.
Commissioner Sanders, did you make a motion to table this?
I'll go ahead and make a motion.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
Motion to table it.
So we have a motion to table this request for future discussions by Commissioner Sanders and seconded by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion, Commissioner, that we haven't already had?
Just one thing, that company, the mobile company, reached out to the county. They didn't reach out, just clarification, they didn't reach out to the airport itself.
No, they didn't reach out to us.
When we first brought that up, Ted and Steve both about fainted in the room. And we were like, oh, we're not gonna put a tower in front of a runway. But anyway, I just wanted the rest of the board to understand, that came to the county, it didn't come to the airport board or the manager.
Yes, if it came to the county commissioner, and we forwarded to John Collins, and then John took his information to the board, and then they have this recommendation for you. And Steve, please explain to the board, I'm not, I'm glad, I appreciate what they did. And we're gonna keep this information, but we have a bigger project looking at, this will be part of.
Well, I understand, and that's 100% right. Do not grab the first apple off that tree.
There you go.
All right, so...
Any other discussion before we vote?
I'm sorry.
I thought we voted, I'm sorry.
Done, we did.
I'm sorry.
All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. We've tabled this for a future discussion. Go ahead, sir.
All right, awesome. As far as the vacant seat on the airport board, the vacant seat is an alternate. Steve Norton and George Wilkerson had turned in applications. Steve Norton is a wonderful guy, like him a lot. He'd be appropriate to help on a committee. George Wilkerson's credentials are incredible. One thing I love locally that shows he gives back to the community, he's the entity that created Aaron Meals and funds it to feed people in the community. But also, he was president of a huge corporation that did a lot of marketing, one of the fastest-growing publicly held firms in the United States. He's a pilot, and he's incredible. And I think to the point that he shouldn't be, this is my opinion, that he shouldn't be an alternate. Ken Weeks, who is now out of town, who is a board member and is operating, 'cause he has a business local, I think we should maybe do a switch and appoint George as a board member. Or should that be decided at my board level?
Mr. Chairman, you may wanna just pump the brakes on that just a moment, 'cause Mr. Morong has another idea that the board may be a little better with or whatnot. But I think the thing is, right now, we need to make a decision. You're asking us to make a decision on Mr. Wilkerson.
Wilkerson, yep.
He's by far the best choice, according to the board and according to his credentials.
Right, and the vacant position is a...
Alternate.
Is a what?
Alternate, yes.
Yes.
And we'd be happy to have him there.
Okay. So, are we wanting to make a motion now to appoint him as an alternate to the board?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. All right, we have a motion to do that by Commissioner Amison?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. I almost said Varns. I know I'm gonna do that eventually one day, probably like three times in a row.
It's all right, I'm gonna go, I'm Varns.
Any discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Please proceed.
Great. I'm gonna skip over the T hangar license agreements, 'cause we already discussed that. There's a few more things, and I'll try to make it as quick as we can. But we did a Zoom, well, a Zoom call, Zoom type call with USDA about potentially funding the hangar complex we're looking to do at the site. Commissioner Jones was a part of it. It went really well. Opportunity Florida, that we're a member of, helped put it together. And as a result of that, they asked us, that we're asking for almost $10 million. They said, why don't you break this up into phases? And this way, if we go after agencies and they wanna kick in, they could go after a smaller piece of the pie. And it doesn't necessarily have to be done in this order. But Phase 1 would be the T hangars to the left. I think it's like 16 or 18 units. Let me get a more picture here. Okay. Let me get my reading glasses on, and I'll make this quick. I apologize. Phase 1 would be the units on the left, and that would come in at about 2.7 million. That would give us immediate revenue coming in from the T hangars. There's a list 25 deep of people who are looking to rent T hangars from the county. And that could bring in a bunch of money for us to help us out. Phase 2 would be for additional 38 T hangars. That's a $3.4 million project. And Phase 3, we made the educational facility, which is on the top right. And that would be two 60 by 60 hangars, which would be 120 by 60. There'd be men's and women's bathrooms in both half. One half would be for the flight training, the other half of the building would be for A&amp;P mechanics. And the third part of it would be the bottom part on the right, which would be three 60 by 60 box hangars for businesses. So, right now, there's no action being taken on it. We're still negotiating with USDA. And when we get something concrete to show you, we'll bring it back. I just wanted to bring you up to date on that. But Opportunity Florida's an incredible asset. Also, Opportunity Florida, and I'm gonna need action on this, it's a recommendation, there's a huge convention in Chicago called MRO America. Every aviation company in America, every aviation supplier, every aviation airframe company is at this convention. And Opportunity Florida said, if we wanna bring business to the airport, this is the place the county should send a representative or two to meet with other companies, see what's going on there, and potentially, next year with marketing material, have a booth set up there to try to lure a business to the county. So the AOEED made a recommendation to allow the chair to complete a grant application, that me, and select one other representative to attend this event. And Opportunity Florida will get us a grant to fund that three-day trip to take care of it. So I just wanted permission to apply for that grant to have two people go to this convention.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just for you other commissioners, when we was in that meeting with Triumph at the airport, Richard from Opportunity Florida stressed that we need to have a presence at these things. It's huge. And he's the one that told us, he said, we'll pay for it. But you guys really need to, you know, be at this, you know...
It's kinda similar to what we did this last week or so, up at the Capitol with Rural Days. You know, we were there. We were there like everybody else was there. So, I think this first, this first year, Mr. Steve was talking about just being there, not really having a booth or nothing, but just kind of being at the event, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, that sounds good. I'm good with it.
I'll make that motion.
Do I need a motion for that?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
All right.
I'll second.
All right. So we have a motion by Commissioner Amison, seconded by Commissioner Ward. And I'm gonna send some people to Chicago in April, it sounds like.
And Mr. Chairman, one more thing to add to that. The other day, me, Mr. Kirschenbaum, Mr. Morong, were in a meeting with Triumph here, in the office in the county, Mr. Kirschenbaum was telephonic. But we got a firm commit from Triumph, as long as we can establish some ROs out there. And so there again, it just goes hand in hand with having that presence to attract some of that business in there. Because, you know, as far as I know, that's the first, you know, Triumph said yes, you know. Instead of something that we'll make.
Yeah, yeah, I understand that.
So we got a firm go there.
Right, okay.
Mr. Chairman, the request, I know we just made the motion in a second, but it says here that we need to complete the grant application and select one other representative to attend the event. Do we need to do that as well, or can you do the application without a name, or?
We'll, we'll have to do it with two names. So I'm gonna be going, and we'll select one other representative. And I guess we'll let you know as soon as we come up with the second representative.
But you don't need that for the motion? You don't need a name?
No.
Okay, all right.
Okay, that's what she was trying to...
I was trying to, yeah. I didn't know if you needed to add the name to the application.
Oh, no, just two people.
All right.
Two, but let's see. All right. Yep, and it might even be that Commissioner Amison might wanna go to Chicago in April. Time will tell.
You don't wanna go?
I got a plan, Mr. Chairman.
Spending enough time on the airport.
So we've already made a motion in a second. Any more discussion, I don't think, I think we're good with that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, and the next thing is, I'm almost done. The airport manager needs a base of operations, and it's enough of him being a gypsy running around the airport. And we looked at a bunch of locations, and we had discussed it previously. There's a helicopter hangar at the site that's being occupied by an RV or a boat. It's totally incompatible use for the airport, and also, there's no lease in place. So, the recommendation from the board is to let the tenant of that hangar know that he has 30 days' notice to vacate the hangar, so the airport manager can move into it with his equipment and keep some of our equipment out of the elements. And he'd have a base of operations. So we're looking for a recommendation. I guess it would go back to Mr. Morong to speak to Centric and tell him that we want this person out of the hangar.
Possibly, but I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Attorney Schuler?
Yes, sir.
If all of these things that Mr. Kirschenbaum are saying are true, that they're in a hangar that they don't currently have a lease for, is 30 days, are we gonna run afoul of any legal if we say it's a 30-day notice?
I would change the motion just to say, to provide them with a lawful notice to vacate.
Right.
I think 30 days is correct, but I frankly don't remember all the terms and conditions of the now expired license agreements. At least that's the representation that's been given to me. But I think the pertinent action to take this morning is to provide notice to the tenant of, is there more than one helicopter hangar?
No, just one.
Okay. Provide, if that's the will of the board, to accept the recommendation, to provide notice to the occupant of the helicopter hangar to vacate the premises in a lawful manner.
Okay. All right. And then it's up to the pleasure of the board if you want to do that or not.
Well, Mr. Chairman, they're not supposed to be there. They don't have a lease. It's a noncompliant use of it, so I'll make the motion to send a letter.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion to approve this notice being given by Commissioner Ward, seconded by Commissioner Ames. Any discussion?
I got something, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I wasn't there, at least.
I think it's expired.
Expired.
Yeah.
This is on the mark tomorrow. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Crum, in my discussions with the representative from Centric regarding all of these T hangars, as I said earlier, they informed me at that time, they do not have lease agreements, they have license agreements. And I can sit down with you and explain the difference technically between the two types of agreements, but the pertinent point being that they are both, or they are expired license agreements. And Centric has told me that based on their past conduct, they give, I believe, 30 days' notice for people to terminate. So, I think 30 days is the correct amount of time. But if it turns out it's 20 or 45, then Centric will just have to provide, you know, whatever the lawful notice is to terminate and get them out.
Right.
Assuming that's what the vote of the board is, the motion is second.
Did I answer your question, Commissioner? You did. All right. Any other discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
That's awesome. Ted, you now have a home. He needs that really bad. And also, our equipment needs it really bad. And eventually, hopefully, we'll build a bigger building for him at the site to house his equipment. I met with, as a result of the first Triumph meeting we had, there was an organization down there called Space Florida. Space Florida's in charge of all rocketry... Space Florida is in charge of all rocketry and aerospace in the state of Florida and luring people here for economic development. I met with them and explained all the things we want to do on our master plan. Met with them in Tallahassee and they explained to us that they would be willing to fund construction of the educational facility if we could find a user that wants to come into the facility. So, what we're going to be aggressively doing is looking for somebody, show the board, the commission, what we're going to present to them and have them try to, try to fish out somebody. So, right now, it was a very good meeting, a very receptive to helping us. Also, we met with Triumph on a phone conference with Corey and Rick and Michael Marone and Commissioner Amoson in regard to what will they help us with. And we tried to back them into a corner to say, you know, we want something that we could lure businesses into the site with, not something that we have to have a commitment from somebody to come in. And they agreed that if we could show them a facility with economic impact and potential job creation, that they would be willing to fund and create the facility ahead of us having somebody in there. So, we would have something to market. And that was incredibly, am I correct, Michael?
Sir.
Am I correct with what I'm saying? Yeah, so that was really good. We're going to follow through on it. What I'm going to do is Florida's Great Northwest, which we're also a member of, what's his name of this, Sean or?
Sean.
Sean.
Shane, Sean.
Shane.
Shane. Shane is willing to put together, he deals with all kinds of MRO companies looking to come into the state of Florida. He said there's a backlog of it. And one thing that he mentioned at the table where the big Triumph meeting was, how many hangars are available for MRO operations in the state of Florida? And everybody at the table said zero. So, he said, if you build it, they will come. And he'd be willing to set up a, a financial disclosure of how many jobs would be created and what the economic impact would be. So, I'm going to start touching base with him to start creating that. And that's about where I'm at. There's a whole bunch more to go. Sorry I put so much on the table right now, but it's been a couple of months since I've been here. Does anybody have any other questions?
Any questions, commissioners?
Just, just one, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Kirchnerbaum, you met with Commander and Vice Commander at Tyndall.
Yes.
It was on your report. I just wanted to know if you wanted to share.
All right, well, Tyndall has been using our airport, Tyndall, Eglin, and Hurlberg have been using our airport for training for years. Ted had on-site something called an NDB, which was an electronic training device for the Air Force, but it's an obsolete piece of equipment. Tyndall has a new piece of equipment that they like to put on-site in replacement of Ted's NDB. That would be something for training that would help them out. And I feel that if we got them involved and got a footprint at the site, I don't even think we should, it should be, in my opinion, a dollar a year lease or something, just to put that there. It's actually a parking spot, pardon me. I thought it was a tower initially. It's just a piece of ground-based equipment. But once they're in there, at some point, we could go to the federal level that the Air Force is using our facility for training to try to secure funding for other capital improvements at the site. In fact, I got an incredible letter from Eglin Air Force Base stating something similar. But anyhow, it's, it's our military, it would be a wonderful thing to try to help them out how we can with conditions in the world today, as long as they're friendly to the community. But other than that, that's a very favorable thing. And also, I think that they're reaching into corners to see if they could help us with implementation financially of the master plan. So, that's about, it's been a long two months for me.
Sounds good.
Mr. Chairman, one more thing, I'm going to be quiet, I know we got a full agenda, but Mr. Kirchnerbaum, not only during that conversation with the commander, he's also got him to possibly do an F-35 flyover and for the, for the 3rd of July celebration. That, that, thank you, Mr. Kirchnerbaum, we have the community for, for trying to secure that. I would direct you to the back of the room to Mr. Solomon, because he is the chamber. And I think they're doing the July 3rd now, if I'm not mistaken.
And what, what that'll be, it's a verbal handshake right now, but what I have to do is file the paperwork with the Pentagon, file the paperwork with Flight Standards District Office. Once the application's completed, I submit it to Tyndall. Tyndall hits Public Affairs and they put us on a list and they're going to try to fit us in. And if not, what I got from Eglin, Eglin will definitely do it. And it'll be awesome. What they do is they'll do a low-speed flyby over the crowd at 1,000 feet. And then after they pass the crowd, they'll break hard left and right at full throttle. It'll be something exciting to see. And if we get the Cadet Corps there to do a color guard and the National Anthem in conjunction like I did at Country Fair, I think would be a wonderful start to the 4th of July. So, thank you for.
Appreciate what you're doing.
All right, thank you.
And officially told him to take a break. Because he's going to burn out on me and I need him to just.
He told me last week and he said, stop, slow down, go away. So, I went to a caliph for three days.
So, that airport's been there 100 years.
All right, thank you.
All right, let's research for five minutes.
Two airport things.
Okay, airport things.
Yes.
All right, go ahead.
It won't be long, I promise. Mr. Collins forwarded a construction contract with Land Collins Service. That's for the obstruction removal project at the airport. FAA is funding $525,000 for that. The match is coming from FDOT. The county did request $600,000. Mr. Collins is working with them to get the other 75. I need board action to authorize the chairman's signature on, on the construction contract for the removal.
Pleasure to the board.
Mr. Chairman, just a quick question. I just want to make a note for the record, just because conflict of interest, the person doing this work is not related to John Collins.
Oh, no, they're two different.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to make a note for that for the record, so I don't want anybody to think that we were doing something that wasn't.
It's like Schuler's, they're everywhere. I'm just kidding.
So, make sure there's no conflict of interest. People see Collins and Collins and they think, you know, anyway.
It's the same, it's the same company that we engaged with.
Yes, that's been doing it. But John Collins for AFCON and Collins Land Clearing, two separate.
Thanks for the clarification.
Thank you, Commissioner.
While we're on that, Mr. Chairman, there was some, some contractors that reached back out to Mr. Ted, wanted to know, you know, about this project. And Ted, Mr. Mosteller told him, he said, you know, it's been advertised, we're already past that point.
Yes.
And just officially, you know, if you want to get in on these bids, you got to, we can't sit there and keep kicking the can down the road, waiting, well, I forgot or I didn't want to, you know, at the time, I didn't know if I wanted to bid on it. Guys, get, you know, the contractors, I need to get these bids in and, and.
Encourage them, Commissioner Ted, to sign up for the county's notification portal that we have, that we notify all contractors and list, doesn't matter what the project is, they're notified by email. So, yes.
All right. So, what's a pleasure to the board for this?
Same.
Second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Amoson, second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Now, I have a second one. This might take a while and some discussion. Ms. Maye was out there, then we have a public hearing. I could bring this up later on during my report and it won't make a difference whether Ted and Steve, Ted will hang around for the whole meeting and Steve will be, Steve is aware of this anyway. So, you want me to defer that to later on? So, you guys could take a quick break?
We can do that.
And then I'll bring it up later, okay?
That'd be fine. Five-minute recess.
Frank, the board of county commissioners now back in session. Before we go to Ms. Mayhew, Clerk Maxwell's pointed out that a couple of checks, I guess, were missed. We need to authorize this manual check run?
Yes, sir. We have six checks that were omitted from the previous check register, and I just need approval on those. And I placed a copy for each of you up there.
All right. Pleasure to the board.
Thank you.
All right. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders.
Second.
With a second by Commissioner Ward. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Is that it?
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Clerk Maxwell. Ms. Mayhew?
Well, good morning. My pleasure to be here. I thought perhaps I'll do just a little bit of background about the work that I've done, the role that I'm in today, and then I want this to be of value to you. As my staff will say, I can talk for a very long time. So I will try to be brief, do a little bit of an overview of the landscape. But first, so currently I am the president of the Florida Hospital Association. That is an advocacy association. I have over 200 hospitals that we support and represent here in Florida. Before that, I served as the secretary for the Agency for Healthcare Administration here in Florida under Governor DeSantis, was responsible for the state Medicaid program and for the regulatory oversight of all the hospitals, the nursing homes, assisted living facilities at the beginning of the pandemic. That is a whole other story I'm sure we could discuss. Prior to that, I came from a very rural state. I grew up in Maine. I was responsible for a state agency in Maine, again overseeing the state's Medicaid program, all the social service programs, the regulatory oversight of hospitals, a lot of rural hospitals in the state of Maine, and then before that worked for a hospital association. So I've been around healthcare and hospitals for a very long time. What I wanted to do is just sort of set the table for what we are today dealing with in our country, in our state, and certainly in our rural areas when it comes to healthcare. And then, but truly I want to respond to certainly questions or comments that you have. I can't begin to address or speak to some of the local concerns and priorities and health needs, but I can try to shape some of the challenges that hospitals and healthcare providers are facing in Florida. It's hard to describe pre and post pandemic, but I'll start with this. Hospitals generally are the heartbeats of their communities, and that is certainly even more true in rural areas of the state. They are generally one of the largest, if not the largest employer. And it is certainly true with smaller rural hospitals that they play a much more expansive role than what we typically associate with a hospital. Outside the general bricks and mortar, they're often supporting public health services. They're doing community health assessments. They are employing physicians. They may be doing mental health services, behavioral health services. So as we look at what is occurring or has occurred over the last several years, I know we've used the term unprecedented for a very long time as we experienced the pandemic, but I just want to give you a few statistics of what hospitals have been up against. So the challenge of the workforce, and hospitals cannot possibly fulfill their mission if they're not able to recruit and retain their overall staff, certainly nurses, but all of the various technicians, surgical technicians, CNAs, all of the healthcare staff that are necessary. So clearly, the pandemic had such an exhaustive impact on our staff, the fatigue, the stress. We had some of the highest turnover and vacancy rates that we have ever seen in the state of Florida, and we have been tracking these numbers for decades. So last year, we had a turnover rate of 32% among our nurses and a vacancy rate in excess of 20%. So that is the statewide average. As a result of that, labor costs, the ability to be competitive, to support the salaries that our staff needed to compete, I'm sure you're aware of all of the travel nurses, the staffing agencies that were attracting our nurses initially to California, to Washington State, to New York at the beginning and some of the peaks of the pandemic. But then that became part of the landscape here in Florida. So they weren't just going cross-country in Florida. They were going cross-county and getting very lucrative pay, and we would not begrudge anyone the opportunity to get those salaries. But our labor costs in hospitals went up 45%. It's hard to even wrap your head around the magnitude of that increase. And when you combine that with inflation that we've been experiencing over the last couple of years, the increasing cost of pharmaceutical drugs, and then supplies, over 70% of a hospital's budget went up over 35%. And that's really important when we think about where their money comes from. So, you know, particularly for smaller hospitals, generally 65%, 70% of the revenue is from two public payers, Medicare and Medicaid. And those are generally not responding to the financial challenges that hospitals experience. Medicaid still pays hospitals roughly 50 cents on the dollar of cost, and that varies. If you are a smaller hospital that may still be delivering babies, you're reimbursed at 35 cents on the dollar of cost. So as those labor costs skyrocketed, and you're still left with these fixed reimbursement rates from Medicare and Medicaid, you've got this tiny percentage of revenue coming from employer-sponsored health plans, commercial health insurance, and they were not coming in to increase reimbursement rates for hospitals. In fact, they were coming in and maybe talking about a 1% increase. Again, 35% increase in 70% of a hospital's budget. So what we saw over the last year or more across the country and here in Florida, hospitals' margins just took a nosedive, tanked. And I'm talking, in this case, from the very small to the very large. We had large health systems in Florida that, for the first time in decades, were experiencing negative margins. And at the beginning of 2023, some of the larger health systems were forecasting for the duration of the year, negative margins. I say all of that just because the dynamic has been a lot of financial stress here and across the country. Unfortunately, if you don't have a lot of reserves, if your cash flow is tight to start, it's hard to weather the storm. There's a large health system in the state of Massachusetts right now that is about to go under receivership. And unfortunately, we've seen small rural hospitals that have been up against either lines of credit, inability to meet payroll. I'm going to take a step back and just talk a little bit about, you know, over the years where the state and federal government has come in to try to recognize that generally with small rural hospitals, inevitably, you have high fixed costs and low volume. And I know you all are very familiar with the needs and the demands in this area, but, you know, back in the 1990s, I'm dating myself a little bit here, but that's when the federal government came in and said, we're going to establish this program known as critical access hospitals. And it was a recognition at the time that we had rural hospitals around the country that were struggling financially. There had been a lot of cuts in Medicare reimbursement. And again, generally, in more rural parts of any state, you've got an older population. So you've got much greater dependency on Medicare revenue. So again, in the late 1990s, when there were a lot of Medicare reimbursement rate cuts being included in the federal budget, Congress and the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services set up critical access hospital designations. And that allowed those hospitals that qualified to get 101% of their costs reimbursed. Generally, if you are receiving Medicare and you are not a critical access hospital in Florida, you get about 80, 86 cents on the dollar of cost. So that's the differential. If you're a critical access hospital for Medicare, you're getting 101% of your costs reimbursed, but it's only allowable costs. So there are some costs that a hospital may incur that have been determined not eligible for the longest time. When you were recruiting a physician and the expenses associated with that, that was not considered an allowable expense. Medicaid, at the state level in Florida, does not provide a cost-based reimbursement for critical access hospitals. I raise that because there are some states that have successfully convinced their state legislatures to do as Medicare did and to raise their Medicaid reimbursement for critical access hospitals consistent with what Medicare does. That is something that I'm raising to you because it's a priority for me in the Florida Hospital Association that we need to be advocating for that. Additionally, at the state level, we have, there was, for the longest time, a fund that had been dormant, a Rural Hospital Capital Improvement Fund, that for many, many years, they did not, the legislature did not appropriate any funds. Last year, again, through the association, we prioritized that fund and successfully got $10 million appropriated to the Rural Hospital Capital Improvement Fund. Last fall, the Department of Health administers that fund. We encouraged all of our rural hospitals to identify their capital improvement needs and to submit applications to the Department of Health, and those applications were received, and grants are now being provided to those hospitals. And they did it in a, just in across the board. Every hospital got the same amount regardless of their need. We are in there advocating, again this year, to make that a recurring funding source, 10 million every year. When we surveyed our rural hospitals, not surprisingly, the needs far exceeded the $10 million, and certainly more than 10 million over the next many years. So we're trying to make sure that that is recurring, or at least at a minimum, get another 10 million authorized. At the state level, you also have the Office of Rural Health that receives federal grants from the Health Resource Service Administration, again, intended to look at and address rural healthcare needs and to fund those opportunities. Particularly right now, they're very focused on rural workforce. How do you go about recruiting and retaining staff, healthcare staff, in rural areas? It is, of course, not unique to this area. This is a significant challenge across the country and certainly in Florida. And as I said, when we look in Florida, because we have, on average, 1,000 people a day moving into the state, and many are over the age of 65, the demand for healthcare services in Florida is skyrocketing. Couple of years ago, we did an analysis related to the number of nurses we have today and the number we will need as we look out over the next 10 years. When we did that survey, if the state did nothing, Florida would be short 36,000, I'm sorry, nearly 60,000 nurses. We did a similar study on physicians. We would be short 36,000 physicians if the state didn't do anything. And I share that simply because you're feeling this push and pull around the state as hospitals and other healthcare providers, nursing homes are all competing to attract a very small pool of physicians and nurses up against this skyrocketing demand for healthcare services. Additionally, one of the things that we also look at is the continuum. What is occurring outside of the hospital related to the availability of nursing home services, assisted living, home health? And I share that because one of the other challenges that hospitals are facing is that they can't discharge timely. So when we looked at that analysis last year, there were 250,000 patient days with patients stuck in a hospital bed, and 20% of them, they no longer required hospital level of care, but we could not find the next appropriate available resource. 20% of them needed a nursing home bed. I only share that because of the challenges that we're seeing throughout the continuum for individuals who may need home-based care. They may need home health services. They may need to be in a nursing home bed. And that is also creating upward pressure for the hospital because once somebody is in the hospital longer than what their payment is based on, the hospital's not being paid anymore. But the costs are still being incurred by that hospital for that individual that is stuck in that hospital bed. So what I wanted to be prepared to engage with you on, obviously, I know that you are looking at what are the needs, what are the demands in the area, and what's the right model to help support timely access? Because at the end of the day, timely access and proximity to care matter. And when we look at rural areas, and again, you know, I come from not just a rural state, but a state that had to look at not only the distance, but in the winter months, you could take that distance and multiply it, you know, by twice because of the challenge of those roads. So knowing that transportation is a barrier, the reluctance to travel, to go get care outside of your home community, how do you understand and assess those needs? And then what is the framework? The one area that I would also offer up that I think has changed a lot of some of the opportunities in providing and supporting and sustaining rural healthcare is just the dramatic availability of new technologies. And again, I know that also depends on what individuals have for resources, what is available in the area for broadband. But at least in terms of the adoption of telehealth, that has bridged a lot of gaps for certain services. It by no means can replace the one-on-one visits that still need to occur, the hospital services that still need to be available. But it has been an incredibly important complement to healthcare and to timely access to certain services. The other area is remote monitoring at home. One of the programs that began during the pandemic was hospital at home. And the idea there was to identify certain patients that, while they needed hospital level of care, with the right technology, with the right frequency of home visits by the doctor, by the nurse, they could be comfortably, safely supported in their homes. Again, I only share that because of the new technology that is allowing for people to be in their communities, to be in their homes, and still receive the kind of healthcare and healthcare services that are so critical. It is not a panacea. It's not the answer to all of the challenges. It's just one of the additional tools that everybody is trying to look at and understand, you know, given the financial stress, given the financial challenges, given the pressure of the healthcare workforce shortages, everyone is trying to understand, how do you bridge those gaps to still fundamentally meet the needs, not only the current needs of your communities, but anticipating, what does that look like a year from now, three years from now? And then also, not just responding to the demand, but how do we improve overall population health? What's the prevalence of diabetes? What's the prevalence of cardiovascular disease? And how do we work to improve health status? And that is really where rural hospitals, rural healthcare is so critically important, not just responding to the immediate needs, but how do we not just responding to the immediate needs, but how do we improve the overall health of the communities? We know how critically important that is to so many aspects of life. So I'm going to pause there. Happy to respond in more detail to any of the issues that are front and center for you here. Again, I can't really comment on direction for you. I wouldn't profess to know what you all have identified as priorities for Franklin County, but happy to try to respond to any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Mahieu. We appreciate it. It was a very good briefing that you gave on the state of healthcare, not just in Florida, but across the U.S. I would like to ask a question, though, if you know, and I know it's not on us because we're not the one making that decision, but I know that the, during the pandemic, the federal government passed an act that basically started a Rural Emergency Healthcare Act or Hospital Act. And I think some states have adopted it, the legislatures have adopted it, which allows for rural hospitals in their state to then be a part of that. And I think Florida is actually working on that this year, passing that. Is that your understanding?
Yes, so it's the Rural Emergency Hospital licensure. You are correct, the federal government established it. It still required the state to authorize and to direct the Agency for Healthcare Administration to promulgate a rule. We started the process last year, we, the Florida Hospital Association, to advocate for the state to move in that direction. We actually got legislation introduced this session. It is moving beautifully. I say that, fingers crossed, cautiously optimistic, things can change, there's still five weeks left, but there seems to be great support. And the agency, the Agency for Healthcare Administration, wants to do this. They are supportive of doing it, and they've conveyed that to the legislature. So I am very optimistic that that will be an option for certain hospitals to consider. Now, it'll take some time. Once the legislature authorizes and passes that, then the agency will need to adopt rules, but that's, it should, that should not be a drawn-out process.
And could you, just for, not just for the board, but for the public, could you give us a short synopsis of what that entails?
I'll do my best. I'll do my best. So the, again, starting with the intent, how do we support hospitals, rural hospitals, remaining, sustaining, but recognizing that they often have extremely low inpatient volume, but still have demands for outpatient services, for emergency department services? This Rural Emergency Hospital designation would allow a hospital to remain licensed as a hospital, but forego its inpatient beds, receive a financial stipend through Medicare for that, for that loss of inpatient revenue, and the idea of being, again, still licensed as a hospital, still receiving the reimbursements, because those differ. You know, if you are a physician in the community versus an outpatient service of a hospital, that reimbursement matters, it's a higher reimbursement. So it allows that hospital to preserve those outpatient services even though they're struggling or were struggling to maintain their inpatient volume. So, but it's a big decision. I, you know, I would not want to minimize that at all. That is, it was, it was much like when critical access hospital status was originally established in the late nineteen nineties. This is yet another tool, option for consideration by hospitals. Now, I will also say this, when critical access hospital status was originally adopted in the late nineteen nineties, I need to stop saying the late nineteen nineties, but way back then, it has changed a lot since it was first adopted. You couldn't swing your acute care beds with your skilled nursing facility beds, very rigid. Every patient was limited to ninety-six hours. That has changed. It is now an average ninety-six hours of all your patients. You can swing your beds back and forth, the number of beds changed. So I say all of that, the Rural Emergency Hospital designation could also, over time, as hospitals experiment with it, get some experience behind them. There may be opportunity for other advocacy to continue to have that program serve its intended purpose.
You brought up a really good point, Ms. Mahieu. So one of the things we struggle with, again, is patients, but with the way it's set up with critical access, if we, I don't think there's an avenue where, if we, even if we had the demand where Weems Memorial Hospital, our local hospital, could, as a critical access hospital, could start having patients that are having two-week stays and three-week stays, we're not a Level One trauma center. You know what I mean? We're not prepared for that. And if they required that other than swing bed services, where they're truly on the mend, then they would have to be transferred somewhere anyway.
And that, you know, when, again, when the critical access hospital program went into place, you know, there was a lot of hesitation and reluctance and concern because, you know, at the end of the day, you still come back to proximity. And I've been around long enough that I remember the debates, and again, not here, but in my rural state back in Maine, of should small hospitals be doing hip replacement? Because we had a lot of rural hospitals that were doing joint replacement. And, and so it is a tough decision to make about where you draw the line, where you try to incentivize, if you're government, where you try to incentivize the agreements, the transfer agreements, the partnerships, the strategic relationships with the larger tertiary. Some of where it comes down, as you, as you reinforced, the way the critical access hospital structure exists is you're, on average, the total of your patients cannot exceed ninety-six hours for that very purpose, to, to try to narrow the focus of the types of services to be supported. Of course, I also mentioned, some hospitals are really challenged, even if the individual no longer requires hospital level of care, to timely and safely and appropriately discharge them because of the, the lack of available resources that extend well beyond the hospital's walls.
Anyone have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Mahieu, you may or maybe, may or may not be able to answer this question, but when it comes to the Rural Emergency Healthcare Designation that they're trying to push for in legislation and the critical access designation, do those, say, for example, our hospital at Weems is currently a critical access designated hospital. If they accept that Rural Emergency Healthcare Designation, does the critical access go away? Or can you use those two simultaneously?
That, it's a, it's a great question, and I don't know that I can answer that. I think it's a, you know, at the end of the day, because you do want to look at your, your funding streams. And so much of the critical access hospital pertains to what you're providing on an inpatient basis, but you are also receiving that hundred and one percent of cost associated with your outpatient services.
Okay, thank you.
Important question.
So that might, just to clarify, to help clarify, that might actually come up in the rules process you were discussing, should Florida adopt it, there will still be a rules process?
There will be a rule, there will be a rules process, but much of it driven by how the federal government has, has set this out and established it. And that question is probably easily answered, and I just don't want to answer incorrectly. So that question has probably already been asked and responded to, and we can, I can quickly follow back up and make sure that you have that.
Thank you.
Just, Mr. Chairman, just, just a clarification. We would have to, like, say, for instance, Weems decided to go with the Rural Hospital Designation, we would have to forego the critical access. That's not something, that's, it's an either-or, correct?
That, that's where I'm not prepared.
But my question is, with the, and you may not be able to answer this one, then, but with the Rural Hospital Designation, doesn't carry any kind of pharmaceutical, from what I understand, as the critical access does? So, you know, how, how is that a better option for rural areas whenever, you see where I'm going?
So, so at the end of the day, the, the very questions that you're asking, and, you know, my assumption is you're either one or the other, right? But I don't want to say that definitively. But, but you're asking all the right questions because what you have to be able to do is line up the revenue. And so much of what rural hospitals depend on are the specialized support. So you were talking about pharmaceuticals. So critical access hospitals, rural hospitals depend heavily on three, what's called three forty B drugs, where you're, you're able to buy your pharmaceuticals with a deep discount because of the status of the hospital. What I can't speak to today is, are you able to retain any of that three forty B status as a rural emergency hospital? But, but so much of the formula is driven by inpatient stays. How many Medicaid inpatient stays did you have? I think that is where you just, we need to take a look at what do you sacrifice and what do you gain? And what's the balance sheet look like once you put those pluses and minuses on the paper?
One other question, with, with the critical access, though, I mean, we, we talk about the Medicaid reimbursement, but doesn't it also come with a certain percentage of a write-off of certain expenditures as well?
Are you, writing off, you're talking about bad?
The non-broadband rate is like sixty-something percent. I mean, I'm, I'm not sure, but I'd like to know if you could clarify on that.
Sorry, did you say bad debt write-off? Is that what you're asking?
No, ma'am. I guess expenses, certain expenses, don't you get a certain write-off with the, with that critical access?
So, so you get a hundred and one percent of your Medicare costs reimbursed, a hundred and one percent of costs compared to all other non-critical access hospitals that are generally only getting around eighty-six percent of their costs reimbursed. Under Medicare, you also have an ability to get some reimbursement for bad debt that Medicare will fund. I think the, the question, again, is as a rural emergency hospital, how much of that would you lose, the ability to recover through Medicare? Because now you no longer are dealing with your inpatient, it's just on your outpatient side.
So there's no, it just rule, just strictly, the rule, I mean, I'm sorry, the critical access, just strictly, the, the only, I guess, incentive of that is the Medicare reimbursement. Is that what you're saying?
As a critical access hospital? You certainly, the benefit today has largely been the hundred and one percent of costs. There are plenty of critical access hospitals around the country that are still struggling because a hundred and one percent, just given the, the increasing costs that folks are experiencing, still often not enough. But then on your Medicaid side, you're not getting anywhere near your costs reimbursed. In Florida, it's about fifty cents on the dollar of cost for your Medicaid patients. And then, of course, you have uninsured. In this county, you have an uninsured rate of about seventeen percent. And, and just very quickly, not to go down too much of a rabbit hole here, but, you know, during the pandemic, the federal government provided an increased payment, federal Medicaid payment, because states were seeing such an initial increase in their unemployment rate, which meant that more people became eligible for Medicaid. So in Florida, we went from roughly three-point-seven million people in March of 2020 who were enrolled in Medicaid to at its peak, five-point-eight million people were enrolled in Medicaid. When the federal public health emergency went away, every state now has to redetermine the eligibility for their Medicaid enrollees. So Florida has been doing that since the beginning of last year. In this county, you've seen a reduction, I want to say it's about fifteen percent of those who had Medicaid and no longer are eligible through those redeterminations. So that's also increasing your uninsured rate.
So, Mr. Chairman, so Commissioner Amerson, so what I mean, we've heard, we've been told over the years, that certain expenses, we were told to term write-off on the cost report. I think what, what it actually is, is it gets reimbursed at a hundred and one percent of some of the, and they're talking more about the management-type expenses, I think is what they're saying, Mrs. Mahieu, correct?
Yes, that's correct. That's, that's, that's what we've been told. I mean, to be honest with you, I can go to every different person in this room that supposedly knows about critical access and get a different answer, and I'm just trying to figure it out.
And so the question is, is it considered, is the management contract considered an allowable expense by Medicare?
Yes.
Okay. Again, I'd like, yeah, no, I, but I've been, I'm happy to follow back up with Michael. Those are not, even though I can't answer them right now, they're very straightforward questions, and I'm happy to get an answer on those.
I've got something I want to talk to you. This is just opinion, your opinion. We have discussed in the past whether to build a new hospital or to build a standalone ER with all your amenities and stuff. Do you see a trend in Florida, being with the Florida, you know, the Hospital Association, do you see a trend with hospitals going more not to build hospitals, but more so standalone ERs?
It's, I mean, it's a great question, and it extends.
She can't answer that.
She's still working on it, go ahead, Ms. Mahieu.
Well, it's a great question in that it extends well beyond whether you're an urban hospital or a rural hospital, because of everything that I talked about around the ability to remotely monitor patients from their, the comfort of their own recliner, right? The, the technology that has changed, so you have large hospitals now that have command centers, and they have nurses who are doing remote monitoring. And I say that because a lot of hospitals are having to revisit the, the fixed costs of bricks and mortar. Now, you can also drive around the state of Florida and you'll see a lot of new hospitals being built. So, right, I mean, some of it comes back to the vision, some of it comes back to population growth. If you've got a much younger population, age demographic, moving into your area, you may look very differently at, you know, what you want for inpatient hospital services. The issue with freestanding emergency departments, and this precedes my arrival in Florida, but those were kind of fiercely debated in, in Tallahassee and around the state. You are seeing a bit of an explosion, I would say, in the number of freestanding emergency departments around the state, and some of that is because it pertains to the referral pattern. So once that person is in the emergency department, if, if it's my emergency department, I can then perhaps have that patient come to my main hospital. So how does that pertain ultimately to the, the business model for that hospital?
Well, and, and you can look around, and I'll use TMH as an example, and you're aware of what TMH is a conglomerate, but they now have an urgent care facility on top of the emergency care and the hospitals and all the little other places they've got around Tallahassee, and, you know, the hospital down in Perry and, and all that. But that's, you know, that's a trend. I read an article, I'd say about ten years ago, and it, it showed the downfall of rural hospitals coming very fast and going more to a standalone ER setting with the, with the big hospitals monitoring.
One of the things that I was probably remiss in saying, we've got a problem with the entirety of the payment system in this country in terms of what it incentivizes. So all of the payers, whether it's the government, Medicare and Medicaid, or whether it's commercial, still largely are based upon the, the crisis or the, the more acute, urgent need. Primary care physicians are still very poorly reimbursed. And yet, we know that a lot of the individuals coming to our hospitals, there's a lot that is preventable, right? If they had timely access to primary care physicians that could help manage their diabetes, manage their heart disease, they wouldn't be in and out of the emergency department. Many of them wouldn't be admitted or readmitted to the hospital. And this has been the huge friction. And this has been the huge friction in the, in the payment model. It's still very much incentivizing volume, the more you do, the more you get paid. And it's still really about the, the highest end of the services with hospitals, but not really looking at those community-based services and how critically important. And that has become even more challenging for rural healthcare. Because at the end of the day, the more that we can support individuals in their communities getting timely access to those community-based services, you would also reduce some of that preventable use of emergency department and hospital services and improve health outcomes.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I can, I can add to that. I, I will say, as I told you over the phone the other day, I do have a medical background. And what we see a lot is the, there's limited amount of primary practitioners in certain areas. And, you know, we just lost two of our, our main ones. So that's going to cause an issue with our, our citizens. But the issue with that also is, is you have a limited amount of primary care practitioners in a certain rural area, and they are so booked up solid that the, the person's trying to get in to see them to help with their chronic issues, and they can't get on, and to see the doctor for months in advance. And so that's why, you know, your ERs are inundated, and that's why your standalone emergency rooms are inundated. And, and as you said, the biggest thing is, is the payers, the, you know, insurance company. I think insurance is a joke. You know, you go to the hospital, and let's say you get a hundred thousand dollar bill for your stay there, but yet weans or our hospitals get reimbursed half of that. So it's, it's hard to sustain a hospital or anything, no matter where it is, rural, urban, metro, it doesn't matter. They're still not getting the reimbursement. That's what's so good about the critical access, because a hundred, I didn't realize it was a hundred and one percent. I knew it was a lot, but I didn't know it was a hundred and one percent reimbursable. And so that's why we, we need to, you know, really look into this rural emergency versus critical access. I know the critical access is very important. And I, I'll be honest with you, I, I was surprised they still keep the critical access. They haven't gotten away with the critical access designation or gotten rid of it altogether. I, I don't know if that's coming. I, I don't know if they're going to decide to go to this rural emergency. I know this is something you can't answer, but that's something we need to look at too. But, but yeah, there's way more than what we can solve today or resolve today or in the future, ten years from now. But I think it kind of all boils down to our insurance companies too, and holding them more accountable for, for paying appropriately.
Well, you're, can I respond? That, that is truly one of the bigger challenges. And, and when we talk insurance companies, often we think about employer-sponsored health insurance companies. But of course, both the state and the federal government have privatized a lot of the administration related to Medicaid and Medicare. So you have private insurance companies that are administering both. And in Florida, we have such a huge percentage of our Medicare population that is in what is known as Medicare Advantage plans, which are the privatized version. And what you just, and by the way, you've got two insurance companies that dominate in Florida, United and Humana largely occupy, you know, they have the lion's share of the enrollment. And for Medicaid, you have Sunshine Health, which is centine nationally, which has almost forty percent of the Medicaid enrollment. And, you know, that's something that we've been spending a lot of time on because when you're having to chase authorizations for care, when the plans delay and deny, and then when they don't pay, so we just did an analysis for our hospitals. For both Medicare and Medicaid plans, forty percent of the claims and the payments were older than ninety days. So you, you know, you're having to wait, you know, your accounts receivables are growing and growing. Meanwhile, you've got to make payroll, but the insurance companies are holding on and delaying those payment authorizations, which is just yet another friction in terms of the, the financial challenges that, that hospitals are facing.
Any other questions, Commissioners?
Yeah, I can think of a million.
Well.
But, go ahead, Mike.
What, what I was going to say, so Ms. May, while we were so excited for you to come, because basically how we got to this point, what the board is looking for basically is where do we go from here? And so we wanted to hear what you had to say to kind of help determine which way to go. But I feel, you guys tend me from wrong, what we would like, and I'm not trying to put you in the spots or something, you can think about and get back to us. And we're not looking for a particular person. But hearing the questions you've heard today and some of the answers you've given, we would like to know who or what type of firm or service do we go after to kind of help the board decide which way to go with? And, and we keep saying hospital, I think we want to talk about healthcare in its entirety for you, for all, for all the county, all your constituents. And knowing that you guys have said this yourselves before, and Mr. Solomon is, is here too, during the summer, some days our population could actually be considered doubled to some degree, you know? And so, yeah, so I guess what I'm asking is, okay, help me help the board by saying, okay, Michael, this is the type of consultant or, or service you probably want to help you make a decision as to which way you want to go.
Right. So there are absolutely firms that specialize and that are often brought in by commissions like yours to do that assessment. They, they specialize in rural healthcare. And they will take into consideration everything that you've just identified and asked and, and everything else you've been thinking about. Because I know in the old, in the adage of misery loves company, you are not alone. And, and many areas of, of the state and the country have been grappling with this. So they do know this, this, the entirety of the inventory. Commissioner Ward, you mentioned the lack of primary care access. That is becoming an even greater challenge around the country. You can give everyone you want a card, but if the doors aren't open, if the physician can't lose more money on that particular payer source like Medicaid, then you haven't achieved anything. Some states, primary care physicians are largely employed by hospitals. The state that I came from in Maine, eighty-eight percent of all primary care physicians were employed by the hospitals. Because they couldn't keep their private practice afloat if you're losing money on both Medicare and Medicaid. So those rural consultants, now I can't speak to what they charge. That would obviously be part of the, the equation. But there are firms out there that will come in with the, the comprehensive look at what you're trying to support and sustain for broad community health services. And then it just comes back to you still have to reconcile it with the perverse financial structure that still exists, that does not reward and incentivize primary care and improved health status. So, so that's been the longstanding challenge. We pay for the heart surgery, but not for some of the preventive engagement in the community. So that is still, unless you can identify some of these resources that have certainly been available, like critical access hospital status because of that enhanced reimbursement, there are grants, rural grants that are intended to support some of the capital improvements, grants around workforce, and you're really, you're tying all of these together and trying to make, you know, decisions around what's sustainable and what ultimately addresses your community health priorities. It has to come back to what, what's the problem we're trying to address? What are the goals that we're trying to support in community health? And then how do you line up the right resources with the right structure to support that? I know I'm preaching to the choir, you all know all that.
And the reason, one of the reasons Mr. Maron asked that question, in the, the last quarter of last year, the board had directed him to try to write up an RFQ for us to hire someone to do that. And that's, it was in the process of going through that that he'd come across a contact with you, and we knew you were coming, it was just going to be a while. So we kind of just delayed that action, not to try to do anything that the board didn't support. But we thought it'd be better to have this conversation today to help frame what were actually the intent of the board was, you know, three or four months ago.
And I, and I, I have a document that we had developed, and why I didn't bring it with me is a whole other story, but that we had developed related to rural emergency hospital status and what a hospital would have to consider and forego. Michael, I will get you that document. So you'll see a side by side of what you have to take into consideration. I also have the names of a number of rural firms, rural consultants, that I'm happy to share with you as well.
Then you come back with a, with a recommendation.
Yeah, or maybe set up some interviews, bring them in here, let the board interview some of the firms. Mr. Chairman, I believe what got us to this point is we collectively are trying to get out of the hospital business. I mean, you know, and this is no reflection on anyone in this room or anybody in the past or anything, but we are like the, the champions that tread water. We've been treading, this hospital's been treading water for twenty years or plus years. At some point, we're going to sink. I mean, I, I, you know, we can say what we want to say, this, this, this precedes COVID. And that's why we're so, that's why we weathered COVID, I guess, better than some, because we was already prepared to tread water, we knew how to do it. My question would be is, and, and we were talking about that. Obviously, you don't want to give us a firm recommendation. I understand, I mean, you don't want to put it out there, so to speak. But my vision and what I've been, you know, I've, I've spoke with other people in the community that have experienced in this, is to establish an authoritative hospital board and, and, and set that up in like a 501(c)(3). That, that's what's pretty much par for the course. How do we, how do we go about doing that? Is that something that you would unofficially recommend? Let's put it that way. And, and if so, another thing too is do we have that, I think we just touched on that, that, that professional, you know, consultant or attorney or whatnot, you know, that, that specializes in the structure of hospitals? I believe, I believe that's where, where we got to this point. You want to make an unofficial recommendation on that?
I do not. But, but what I will say, that is, when these consultants are brought in, they're, here's the good news, there really aren't that many choices, right? So you've got to have legal expertise because of the way in which you are today currently structured. Then the options become, you know, do you stay in the, in the same structure, but you are looking at affiliations and strategic partnerships? Do you convert to a private nonprofit 501(c)(3)? And what are the pros and cons of that freestanding 501(c)(3) hospital? Then the other option is, do you sell to a system? You know, do you become part of a larger system? And, you know, that could be a, a nonprofit system, or it could be a for-profit system. I mean, those are, you know, some of your options, including now, of course, the rural emergency hospital designation. So it's not like you've got twenty different paths. You, you really do just have a handful of options that you just need the expertise of someone to come in and line up the pros and cons. But I would say up against, what are you trying to accomplish? What, what are your, your goals that you want to know? How well do each of those models address your goals? And what's the financial sustainability?
I have one other question for today. We have a, we have a, a kind of a unique, I don't know if it's unique, it's unique, I think it's unique. But anyway, we, as you were told earlier, a lot of our primary care physicians have, have left. We've had Dr. Newton that, that went to work over at Sacred, and then Dr. Sanala, who's leaving the area. That's created a, a more urgent, you know, if we're going to be medical, we triage in this. We need to stick, you know, we need to figure this primary care issue out because that's immediate. People need prescription refills and continued healthcare. But my question, and we, we come across this, this obstacle. And, and we were told, me and Mr. Maron ourselves, because we had reached out to Ascension to see if possibly Dr. Newton, if they would like to bring Dr. Newton into Dr. Sanala's area, if that would be something that they would entertain to give us that primary care physician back in the area. Because again, we're trying to figure out something immediate. The, the obstacle that we've come up, or that, that we've hit is CHP. They will not allow, or the billing has to go through the campus over there in Gulf County, which does not, that's not going to help us as a community. How can we bring CHP to the table and, and get them to accept Gulf County? And, and I say Gulf County because in that conversation, we found out that CHP will not allow you to go over in Gulf County to the Sacred campus, but you can go through Gulf County and go to Bay County and go to Ascension Health over there. That's ridiculous. And I want to tell you why, because we have a very geographically long county along the coast. You know, I know the TMH issue with, with CHP, I know there's some, there's some, you know, I guess you can say leverage there to keep us out of there. But it, it's an obstacle for us. We're either going to have to figure out something with CHP, and this is me when I say we, I should say, I'm thinking that way. And I'm sure my other board members, after we had this discussion, probably going to start leaning that way. We're either going to have to find another insurance company, or CHP's going to have to come to the table, and let's get something done there. Because it's a disservice to our citizens to have to drive all the way to Tallahassee from the far west side when we've got a hospital that's fifteen minutes away, or not just a hospital, but, you know, where they've got a lot of services over there, you know? I mean, you can go there and get a colonoscopy versus having to prep and drive all the way to Tallahassee. You, you see what I'm saying? I'm making a joke out of it, delighting it up. But that's a big obstacle for us. And what kind of advice could you give us to potentially remedy that?
Well, I think, I think you know, right? I mean, at the end of the day, it's coming in and being able to negotiate with whatever carrier is going to support you and support what you need to be providing to individuals in this area. The, the challenge with anybody trying to negotiate with an insurance company is, what do you bring into the table that, that forces them to reevaluate? And in this instance, and this is a challenge around the state, is network adequacy. Right? Are they enrolling enough providers to support timely access to services? If we were talking Medicaid right now, there are rules that they've got to ensure that a person doesn't need to travel any farther than so many miles for certain services. That doesn't apply in this instance, talking about capital health plan as a, as a private insurer related to this population. I, I, I think you're, you're, you're putting on the table exactly what you need to evaluate. How do you at least initially engage with CHP? Do you bring Florida Blue in, you know, in terms of their relationship with CHP? And what are they willing to do? And then you, you probably have others in your community that have relationships with some of the senior execs at CHP and at Florida Blue that might also be helpful in some of these discussions.
Do you have some names? Is that a hint?
Well, I just, I just came from Tallahassee, I'm just saying. So there's a lot that your local delegation may also have some thoughts or ideas about as it relates to communicating with those plans.
Commissioner Amerson is spot on in what I had to say. You know, essentially, we are limited services, you know, with CHP. Pediatrician, we don't have one. We, we, you know, we have a doctor here, but, you know, pediatricians over in Port St. Joe, we could not go to Port St. Joe, you know what I mean? So that is, that is our big issue is our limited services.
Right. And, and you, I just want to, you're not alone. Network adequacy, access to primary care services. I just saw data, not specific to this area, but outside of the Panama City area. If you are new to that area, you are waiting, regardless of what you have for payer, you are waiting seven months to get into a primary care office. So, and that's if you have coverage, or you have commercial coverage. So it, it is a huge problem. Some of it also comes back to, you know, who's providing primary care and some of the restrictions around that, whether that's a, you know, access to nurse practitioners. They are trying to do some work around that in the legislature to try to target support, to expand the role of nurse practitioners in rural areas. That tends to be a little controversial. controversial, but it is exactly because of what you're describing, when you don't have that local access to some of those fundamental, basic, important primary care services.
Anyone else?
I just want to tell her thank you for coming.
Oh, my gosh.
Because you have made a lot of breakthroughs for us as far as what we need to do, you know?
I got one more question, I'm gonna leave you alone.
I don't believe you.
Quick study. But is there any one person that is the like guru critical access person that I can call that can explain critical access to me? Because like I said, I've talked to numerous people, and I've got, every one of them has a different, I guess, idea or interpretation of what critical, and I am lost as a fish in ocean right now.
Someone from the late 1990s.
It's, do what now?
Someone that was around in the late 1990s.
I'm just, I mean, you know.
There are gurus. And so, you know, Iowa led the country in terms of at least initially the number of hospitals that converted to critical access hospital status. I can absolutely get, Michael, some names of individuals who just, they have cut their teeth on going around the country and explaining and educating and supporting conversions to critical access hospital. One of them, and I'm not biased here, they truly are nationally recognized, but they're out of Maine. And so there are some firms that really have been doing this for a very long time, and they will be ready to answer all of those questions.
Okay. And thank you.
Oh, my gosh, my pleasure. And I hate it when I can't answer all the questions, so, but I will make sure Michael has a number of resources to lean in on.
Well, I can say, I came in 1998, critical access was already here. So it was wait for I got here.
I'm just, it just, it's frustrating when you're trying to understand something. And, you know, we can talk seafood, and I feel very comfortable. We talk about hospital or medical, and I'm, you know, I'm trying to learn.
But can I just make you feel a little bit better?
Sure.
If this was all rational, we'd all understand it a lot better, right? That's not how a lot of this, it's politics, it's government, no offense, it's just unfortunately, it's not straightforward. It isn't exactly logical. So no one should feel badly about asking any of these questions. What you should all though be very clear about, you know what you expect from healthcare. You know what the ideal should be. It's just how do you get closer to it, knowing that so much of the system is still very irrational.
Makes sense. Thank you for your time.
I'm gonna run before he comes up with another. Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.
So let's take a five-minute break.
Okay, before we go to podcast.
Franklin County Board of County Commissioners now back in session. Up next on our agenda is the public hearing for the TDC spending plan. Ms. Griffith, I guess I'll turn it over to you.
Yep. Let's see. At this meeting, which was duly advertised, we're going to present the tourist development spending plan for the next two years. And I do want to kind of provide a little bit of background information for you all at this point. As reported during this year's budget discussions, there was a change in the 2023 statutes which authorized the expenditure of up to 10% of tourist development tax proceeds to fund public safety services. Before this could occur, the county had to go through the process to amend the TDC spending plan to reflect the change. Attached is the draft plan, which has been circulating since early December, and was actually formally approved by your tourist development council in advance to you all for consideration at their meeting in January. The 2023, 2024, actually, sorry, cut off here. The attached draft plan clearly outlines the goals and objectives for tourist development and provides a guiding document for budgeted revenues and expenditures going forward. In the 2023, 2024 plan budget allocates the current year's revenues as percentage totals. A maximum of 9% can be spent for administration activities, 40% in advertisement and promotional activities, 21% towards objective E and F of the plan, which would be museum improvements and operations, erosion control efforts, maintenance dredging and visitor center activities, 10% for public safety services, 10% for beach park facilities, and 10% as a reserve. Interest revenues are earmarked for engineering and design costs associated with projects, and carryforward funds are proposed to be allocated to a variety of projects which fit within Florida statute and the objectives of category E and F of the plan, including the replacement of dune walkovers on St. George Island as a control, as an erosion control method, replacement of the decking on the access ramp to the St. George Island fishing pier, replacing the theater curtains at Chapman Auditorium, improvement to publicly owned and operated auditoriums, improvements at the county sports arenas, construction of an East Point Nature slash visitor center, construction of a second county convention center, which would be size appropriate for the population and area. Imagine a structure similar to the clubhouse and the plantation on St. George Island. See, the first convention center in the county is Fort Coombs Armory Convention Center in Appalachia Cola, and there are plans to finish renovations to the Fort Coombs Armory Convention Center. Spending plan concepts were subject to the governing body making the appropriate legislative findings for the use of the sales tax proceeds, and/or some concepts and project elements may necessitate clarification on eligibility for funding by the state attorney general. And as far as that's concerned, you all have the plan in front of you. If you have any questions or comments, or, and I believe we also need to open it up for a public comment as well.
Okay. Commissioners, do you all have any questions or concerns before we open up for public comment? I will say, Ms. Griffith, I don't know, I haven't looked at the legislation, and I hope I'm not saying that that runs afoul of that. I know that one of the things, one of the primary things we're doing is to address this ability to use for public safety services. All I will say on that is, it is my expectation, I hope it's expectation of this board, especially concerning the Franklin County Sheriff's Office. If we're, if the TDC funds are used to hire two deputies, especially during the peak season, it's my understanding that they're not just hiring seasonal employees, they're hiring full-time employees. So any and all concerns we have with special events that are happening in the county that may not be during the peak season, or even during the peak season, if there's, it looks like there's a request for monies to fund two deputy positions, then it is my understanding that they would not only be on St. George Island, but they'd also have, be able to have a deputy at Alligator Point if they're having parking issues. That's why we're doing multiple deputies. So just to state that for the record, that's, I think, what the board is understanding and intending. I do know that once we, like everything else in our budget, once we say yes, and we're given the money, we kind of lose control over it. But on the front end, as we're considering this, that's what I'm understanding is going to be done. And I just wanted to relay that, that all, that thought.
Mr. Chairman, I'm glad you brought that up, because I know, I think Mr. Marone has something like that on his report. And that was my consensus, is I think, you know, we have other beaches in our county that have multiple issues. I know, like in Alligator Point, we have parking issues, and it's just some other things. I know on McKissick Beach, I get calls quite a bit about the dogs off the leash and things like that. So I think that having visible patrols in each area is just as important as St. George Island. Because the beaches, let's face it, all of because the beaches, let's face it, all of them are being utilized in the summer. I know St. George Island is probably one of the biggest ones, I do understand that, but we do have other beaches in our county. So, that was, that was going to be my, my request, too, is to make sure that we ensure that they're on all of our beaches, not just one specific beach.
Yeah, and that, that was going to be my request, to have them at all of them.
Well, that's, again, that's the, I understand, I had going into this the reason they were asking for multiple deputies, not just one. So, we could cover multiple areas. And they all validly need it. I will say now, when the population doubles, it usually doubles in a smaller area, but just as long as those concerns can be addressed is what I want to make sure and clarify.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
What about like events where we have a high influx of visitors?
Same thing.
Seafood festivals?
Yes.
Anything chili cook-off?
Yep.
Anything to that?
Yeah, that's, that was intended, what I was trying to say, yes sir. Yeah, because the, truly, right now, the, and I wasn't trying to cut you off, I apologize. That we still, it's less than it was, but we still have kind of a season, if you will, for tourism, that starts right around the chili cook-off and goes to, to Labor Day. But it is becoming more rounded over time, and there's more and more people that are here at other times. But there are events that are held, and a lot of them, the TDC are helping fund with TDC dollars, that are being held across the county to promote the county, and those deputies need to be made available for that as well. And that, that's all I was trying to, yes sir.
So...
They were all on the same page.
On that same note, too.
Yes.
That's what, like, one of my other concerns is, you know, we're saying two deputies. So, what if we don't find two deputies? Um, does it, you know, what does the money go to, you know, spread within the ranks, or?
Uh, well, actually, I think, I think that could be clarified. Ms. Griffin, isn't it reimbursable?
It is, it's actually reimbursement, so, so that's one thing, you know, typically with a budget allocation, you know, we provide the funding, and then it, you know, beyond that, that's kind of our responsibility level. However, in this case, we will actually have to develop some reimbursement guidelines as well, and then they will also have to submit documentation of expense. So, it is reimbursable, and it cannot be part of their regular operating budget. So, that is part of my report. Actually, later on, you know, once we move past the spending plan component, we can kind of get into the nitty-gritty of that.
Well, and I don't want to be a foul of anything either, but I think a good marker that citizens will be to understand and know what they're seeing, when they're seeing it. They already have marking on the vehicles. I think there needs to be a Franklin County logo or a TDC logo on the vehicle so they know who they're seeing.
Yep.
Uh, in those areas.
Without the requirement for TDC.
That's what I'm saying, to use TDC dollars, so.
Yep.
I know we've never done that before, we've also never used TDC dollars to fund public services before either, so.
Yep.
Just to, I mean, I did, just to kind of get my brain wrapped around that, we've already got how many, we're funding through the budget, in the sheriff's budget, how many positions there that's not filled right now? Are there two?
As far as how many are unfilled, that's going to be a question for the sheriff.
Okay. We'll have to hear it.
Yeah, I do know we fund about, I believe it's about 86 sheriff's deputies, I believe.
Don't get me wrong, what I'm, what I'm getting at is, is we've already got those two spots out there, if I'm not mistaken, it's two, that we still haven't gotten filled, or sheriff hasn't. And now, we're asking for a couple more, you know, to be funded through here. It's not so much that it's an issue of doing it, I'm all for it, but we're not getting anybody that's applying for jobs, you know? That's, that's where I'm kind of going with that, you know? So, there again, that echoes what Commissioner Crum says. If the, if it doesn't get filled, we got to bring them funds back out?
No, it's reimbursable, they can get the funds till they can share with their spinnin'.
Okay, I got you.
It's reimbursable, all this is reimbursable.
And that 86 number was actually all employees, sorry, not just deputies.
I thought it was.
Yeah.
And Mr. Chairman.
There's a lot of people real quick.
I will say that, and just to line this up, it's hard, the element of being a law enforcement officer today, let's face it, it's not as attractive as it used to be. But if you advertise it saying, hey, you get to patrol the beach, you know, there, there might be some guys chomping at the bit to just be able to go patrol the beach on a four-wheeler to see all the ladies out there. I mean, that's how we come to advertise it.
Okay, well, we went there, I guess.
What we can do, we don't, we don't need a four-wheeler.
At least there wasn't a guy that said it, that would have been bad.
It's true, is it not true?
But all kidding aside with that, what type of timeframe are we looking at? Because those funds also, if we can't, I'm sorry?
It should be coming up this year.
Well, what, 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 when I meant timeframe, I meant on the sheriff filling those two positions, because that money can be for EMS as well, you know? I mean, are we going to hold that money up for, you know, how many months, years? On this, you know, on the assumption that we're going to get that, those positions hired? They don't get hired, and then we could have used that money in, in other emergency aspects. You follow me? That's what I'm trying to.
Yeah.
I do, Ms. Erin, how much is the, if you could help us clarify this? I think this would help answer that question.
Actually, if I can, I can actually go ahead.
How much is available under the current?
Oh, okay, under the current, with the 10% limitation in there, I can tell you what the availability is. 10%. Okay, that's $314,768 annually.
Right.
And one thing to note on that, which should I, do you want me to go ahead and discuss my two requests for the public safety EMS?
Yes, that's what we need to know, so we know if there's any, any reserve in that 10%.
Okay.
I guess is what we're trying to find out, is that correct?
Okay, let's see, yes, there is, there will be some funds left available. Yes. And we can't take action on these two items, of course, until the spending plan gets adopted. But we'll go ahead and, okay. Yep. Okay, the newly adopted TDC spending plan now includes 10% for public safety services under Objective H, I'll go ahead and read Objective H for you, which is the safety and security of visitors to Franklin County is of the utmost importance to county leadership. Investment of up to 10% of the county's tourist development sales tax proceeds towards eligible public safety services will ensure that the county remains a positive and safe environment for visitors and residents alike, and addresses the needs from agencies that are impacted from additional tourist traffic. As outlined in statute, the governing board of a county or municipality may not use such taxes to supplement the normal operating expenses of an emergency medical services department, a fire department, a sheriff's office, or a police department. Funding shall be provided in the form of a reimbursement for eligible tourism-related activities upon the receipt of acceptable supporting documentation for the expense, a recommendation to approve by the TDC, and a majority vote to approve the reimbursement by the Board of County Commissioners. The TDC has already recommended approval, and the requests are now presented to you today for approval. So, again, granted, we can't vote on this at this point. The sheriff's $153,208 request will hire and equip two additional sheriff's deputies to patrol the high tourism area of St. George Island. Now, he had limited his original request to that, but you all have voice concerns and would like for those deputies to also, you know, go to other areas of the community, such as, you know, off-season events, or possible other, you know, beach park areas that may also need additional patrols. And with having the designated logo on there, you know, that's one way to ensure that citizens know that, that is their TDC sales tax dollars at work, and they will be able to easily identify, you know, the patrols as well. Let's see. The St. George Island Volunteer Fire Department responded 199 emergency medical calls in 2022, and nearly all of the calls to the beach areas were in response to non-resident tourists and visitors. The St. George Island Volunteer Fire Department is requesting reimbursement from the TDC to fund the outright purchase of a beach-compatible ATV fully equipped with a medical sled in the amount of $25,618.90 and approximately $30,658.44 to cover the annual payment on a fully equipped, equipped, quick-response vehicle. Both requests are outside of the regular operating budgets for both entities.
So, Ms. Erin, I do want to ask a question, I'm trying to do some math here. I'm kind of challenged to doing both at the same time. The, uh, the $31,000, is that for the same vehicle annually to be done? Is that what you just read?
Oh, I'm sorry, one more time?
The, the vehicle, is it annually going to cost $31,000?
It is, it is, yep, it's actually, I believe they did a payment schedule of four, four years on that.
That makes sense.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, those vehicles are extremely expensive.
Oh, they are, but I just, payment schedule, that clears it up.
Yep.
Yep, that clears up the question I had. Yeah, so that still leaves probably about half of it? Is that right?
Probably looking at, you know, around $100,000 remaining.
Yep, okay. That's what I wanted to clarify, okay. Does that answer your question, Commissioner Anderson?
Yeah, no.
Okay. Okay. As far as everything else in the plan, I will say, Ms. Erin, I know that this was done in conjunction with the, the TDC. They looked at it, they approved it. A lot of these discussions, I can tell you, Mr. Solomon and I have been having for the last several years, trying to look to a point where we necessarily wanted to get some of these things done, but this, passing this TDC spending plan does a lot of things for us. It will give us the flexibility and understanding of knowing what projects that the citizens and the residents could be looking forward to, and knowing where their TDC dollars are going. All those things are very high on the list of priority for myself. But, you know, in this, I will, I will say, the, the state passing the ability to use TDC funds in other ways kind of helped to prompt this and to make sure we were clarifying it. We should have probably already done it, but that really falls to me. But I am looking forward to, as Commissioner Anderson said many times, we can't go back, but we can go forward. So, I'm, I'm glad to see a lot of these things here. We've had some difficulty trying to make sure there are things we can actually spend TDC dollars on. That's just the way the legis, the, the way it's written up in statute. But, so, are there any other things from the commission before we open up for public comments?
I just want to say one thing, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I am glad that we got the armory down there to do the floor refishing and the window replacement.
Yes.
That's a very important thing, we've been trying to do that for years.
That should be about it for that building, shouldn't it?
Yeah, it should.
And the electric.
Should be. Yeah, should be. But I like the way you got it for multiple years in, in place, because building is old, but it's usable. And it's a historical monument, and we got it at the convention center in Franklin County.
All right. One other thing I will say before we open for public comment. I know Ms. Ms. Erin and Mr. Solomon, there's some money set aside in here for maintenance dredging. I don't know how our current conversations are going to go. So, depends on how they go, we might have to try to amend this plan, but we can deal with that when we get to it. Just, just because of some of the difficulty we've had, in particular at the East Point site with the dredging. So, I just wanted to bring that up, I felt it was appropriate time to do so. At this time, I'll open up for public comments. Anybody in the room that wants to comment on the plan before we take possible action today? This is a public hearing, you do not need a speaker card.
Would you, yes, I'm tired, sorry.
You do not need a speaker card.
Yeah, you don't need a speaker card.
Please come up and state your name for the record.
Hi, I'm Lynn Wilder, and I just wanted to make sure that you guys consider, and maybe it's annual budgets or something else, but our tourism is thriving, you guys know that, and it's continuing to increase. Keeping Franklin County an attractive and healthy place to live and visit is important for both us and our environment, and part of our challenge is in addressing the increasing litter problem. And so, I'm hoping that the TDC will consider funding for stopping litter, increasing recycling, and helping beautify areas when possible. Litter does reflect community pride and priorities. Recycling helps our environment, and a lot of visitors expect it. I get approached all the time about that. And then, who doesn't want to see less dumping and more wildflowers? Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Anyone else in the room before we go to those that sit in the Zoom? Okay, see if anyone attending by Zoom would like to comment publicly.
All right, all those attending by Zoom, the chairman has given you an opportunity to speak on this matter. Could you please use the raise hand feature, and we will select you, open up the mic for you to speak. Going once, going twice, anyone on Zoom would like to, to address the board on this matter, please do so by using the raise hand feature. Chairman, as you can see, no hands pressed.
So, Ms. Griffin, before we proceed, is there anything else we need to do or discuss before we entertain a motion?
I actually know you all, I'll actually, Shuler, they'll make a procedural vote to advance towards adopting the ordinance, and I'll read it, and then vote again? Is that what we do?
Well...
Mr. Chairman, pardon me. The adoption of the spending plan, if that is what the board is going to do, is different than your ordinary adoption of ordinances. Historically, ordinances are approved with a majority vote of the members present. For your spending plan, it has to be a four-fifth vote essentially of the membership. And we've, we've got all five members here, so if four members vote in favor, it passes. If four members do not vote in favor, then it fails. And I just want to bring that procedural issue to the board's attention.
Okay, do we need to actually read the ordinance into the record?
You write the caption.
Um, I, I've actually, you know, just done a brief summary. I mean, I can read it verbatim if I need to.
Typically, I just read the caption of the ordinance.
Okay, this is an ordinance approving a plan for tourist development in Franklin County, Florida, providing for separability, rescinding all ordinance and conflict therewith, providing for separability and an effective date. Keep going, Shuler.
That's it, right?
Okay, that's it, okay.
Okay. Any discussion from the board, or what's the pleasure of the board?
I assume to adopt this as written.
Okay.
Second.
So, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, a second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion, Commissioners, before we vote? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous, five of them. All right. Up next, are we doing an opening today, Ms. Griffin?
Oh, we are, yes. Yep.
Shafter Hollis has come. Remember how it was for you, you first started, you were about to get him, you touched on it.
Okay, Commissioners, today we are opening requests for proposals for civil engineering services relating to the construction, engineering, and inspection for the widening and resurfacing improvements on County Road 67 from State Forest Road 166 to State Forest Road 172. The total length of the project is approximately 1.8 miles, and the scope of the project includes widening and resurfacing the existing lanes, the addition of paved shoulders, shoulder stabilization, and culvert extensions. In addition, signage and pavement markings will be upgraded or replaced. And...
Ms. Griffin, before you start opening, can I ask a question, just to make sure? Clarification, because we know what we're doing, but I want to make sure the public knows what we're doing. So, in, in awarding one of these today, we're going to be awarding the people, the company that's going to be overlooking the inspection of the engineer, of what's being done?
Correct.
Okay, that's cool, I just want to make sure the public is aware.
And just add something else to that, Mr. Chairman, because I want to make sure the rules are still like they was, because you cannot have your, your county engineering firm be the CEI of the project, right?
That's correct, for FDOT projects, they do not allow for that.
So, you can't design the project, and then be, it's fair with the project.
Yeah, yeah, some programs.
I just want to make sure that rule is still in effect.
Thank you, Ms. Griffin, may proceed.
Okay, the first one is Southeastern Consulting Engineers from Weahatche, Florida. And the next one is, let's see, Anchor Engineering, or Anchor Engineering Network, CEI, 450 Magnolia Avenue, Panama City, Florida.
Do these have an amount attached to them, or are they just requests for proposals?
They do not have an amount, I believe.
Are they supposed to? I guess is the question I'm asking.
No, they're not. Yeah, yeah, I think we negotiate with them, and they...
And then you write them, and then it comes back to you, you select one, and then we negotiate the cost.
Yeah, FD, FDOT would also have to approve the actual proposed amount from them as well.
Okay.
And this is going to be AECOM Technical Services Incorporated from Tallahassee, Florida. And the ranking committee, or we have a proposed committee of Ms. Kimberly Raffield, myself, um, and Michael Morone, and Mark Currenton is, um, not allowed to be on the ranking committee for the FDOT projects, because he was the, the project lead.
Yes, he was. I'm making a motion to go ahead and turn this over to the committee, and I haven't come back with a recommendation.
And approvals from Commissioner Sanders to turn this over to the, to the review committee.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. All right, Ms. Griffin, over to you, report.
Okay, commissioners, item number one, uh, the county has finally received a notice of award for the 1.6 million dollars in construction funding for the Restore Countywide Dune Restoration Project. The restoration study was completed in April of 2022, and the county has since gone through an extensive review process with the U.S. Treasury. The project will include template dune and habitat restoration at the two county-owned beach parks, and will plant approximately 171,000 sea oats along 11 miles of shorelines, which is four miles of public beach on St. George Island, 0.8 miles of Carabel Beach, five miles of Alligator Point, and 1.2 miles along Bald Point. One significant hurdle for the project was relative to special award condition number three in the attached NOAA. The U.S. Treasury initially wanted a recorded covenant on each beachfront property for the indeterminate duration of the life of the plants to protect and provide access to the sea oats, of which they deemed to be federal assets if funded by Restore. After much discussion and negotiation, county staff, with assistance from County Attorney Schuler, received approval from Treasury for them to accept a simple 18-months licensing agreement in lieu of the recorded covenant. The license agreements will be sent to all beachfront property owners along the 11 miles of the project area, and this agreement will grant access only to the planting area along the shore for approximately six months for planting, and an additional 12 months thereafter for the warranty period. The signed licensing agreement will not be recorded, but will be required to be on file before the sea oats can be planted. The template licensing agreement is included as an attachment to this report. Once the final NOAA is approved, the final draft from Treasury will correct a minor detail to shift the responsibility to confirm receipt of the licensing agreements from the county attorney to the project's engineer. We should have that someday this week. The county can proceed with getting the construction, engineering, and oversight contract in place, the permits reissued, distribution and collection of the license agreements from all beachfront property owners, final bid, design specifications, and advertisement for construction to begin upon conclusion of sea turtle nesting season in the fall. Action item A is board action to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the notice of award from the U.S. Treasury for the Countywide Dune Restoration Project, once issued the final change to the special award condition mentioned above.
Pleasure of the board. Motion to approve by Commissioner Amos.
Second.
Second by two, Commissioner Kroom and Commissioner Ward. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, just a quick question, I don't know if I may be misreading this, but you said, "Once this issued with the final change." Now, once we make this motion, we're not gonna have to make another motion, what's, okay.
No, no, it, the, uh, the special award condition had already been changed to allow for the, um, 18-months licensing agreement. It was basically a, a very small change in the language of special award condition number three, whereas initially, they tried to place the burden of proof on Attorney Schuler. Um, and we actually requested them to change it, and they have agreed, but they're just working through their, um, their team to actually get the NOAA reissued with the change.
Okay.
Because it should be the responsibility of the engineer.
Correct, the, um, the phone conference that Erin and myself had with our, uh, the contact that she's been working with in Washington for this project, the original discussion was that the project engineer was going to be responsible for the licensing agreement. My role was to try and convince the folks in Washington to get away from restrictive covenants and, uh, because that, that actually transfers a, a property right that I really don't think people are going to be willing to provide, and most likely would result in, in, in the, the project failing. The license agreement does not grant a right of ownership in, in the real estate, it simply gives a right of access. Uh, what, they won't, first time, like a 15- or 12-year period or something?
Oh, my gosh, it, yeah.
Ridiculously long period of time.
It was unbelievable, and arguing that it was federal assets, actually, that was the, I was like, what?
So, uh, Erin and myself were successful in getting them to reduce, uh, the, the length of the term to a total of 18 months, and using a licensing agreement that the, uh, the project engineer would then be responsible for going to all of the, uh, the, the property owners in that 11-mile area, and getting the licensing agreements signed. And then when they sent the, the agreement in, they had a, a, basically a belts and suspenders, uh, approach, where the engineer would do it the first time, and then they wanted me to go back and do it a second time, and that just made no sense to me. So, I requested, uh, that Erin contact them and, and remove the obligation that, you know, I have to double-check and repeat everything that the engineer has already done in, in obtaining, um, the licensing agreement. So, that's, that's where we are, Commissioner Ward. But they have agreed, that's my understanding, so I don't think we have to come back and do any additional, uh, action by this board.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any more discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, um, and the, I do have a second item that's also relative to the Countywide Dune Restoration Project. Um, at the August 1st, 2023 meeting, the board was opened responses to the RFQ for professional engineering and construction oversight services for the, for the Countywide Dune Restoration Project. There was only one respondent to the RFQ, MRD and Associates of Destin, and the response was released to Langton and Associates for their review. Uh, now that a construction grant award has been approved, the county can now release the response to the ranking committee, which will be comprised of myself, Mark Currenton, and Michael Morone for staff review and recommendation. Uh, board action to release the RFQ response for the professional engineering and construction oversight services to the review committee stated above.
All right.
So move.
All right, so we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Amos. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say, you know, we started this process in August. I, I wish things would go a lot quicker. I know we have to go legal-wise by things, but gosh, it seems like we motion and vote and act, and then it comes back again, and it's like the motion on something else, and it just... I know there's no way to consolidate and to make it quicker or faster in any way, but, gosh, dog it, there should be a way, I don't know, I, I just, it's frustrating.
Let me, let me help you with that, we actually started this process about five to four and a half years ago. That's how long this has been in work.
So I can't, I can't complain too much then, huh? From August to four or five years ago.
Commissioner Sanders, here's a senior commissioner, tell her welcome to government.
And the wheels of government.
Do not turn.
Well, they need to wheel those, grease those wheels and make them turn faster, because it gets aggravating.
Nothing like the wheels in a box, nothing at all.
I'm just glad we're almost to the, to seeing it realized.
Remember that story I tell everybody, it was eight years till we got a paving project done. Eight years. Two reelection cycles.
And that's not on Aaron, I just want to make that clear. It's not on Aaron or Attorney Schuler or nobody, it's just frustrating.
Yeah, unfortunately, the higher you go with government, the slower it moves as well. You know, with this project being federal, it's, uh, it's definitely like waiting for the buck.
Well, we did vote on that, didn't we?
No.
Okay, I wanted to make sure, I didn't want to bypass it and not vote. No, we didn't vote, did we?
No, I don't think we did.
We did have a motion to second, though.
Yes.
You did, Mr. Ward, Commissioner Amos.
There you go, thank you. You're a parliamentarian, thank you.
I was looking asleep.
Any more discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. Please proceed, Ms. Griffin.
Okay, uh, next item is an excessive force policy resolution. Uh, Franklin County, as a recipient of community development block grant funding, acknowledges its responsibility to adhere to applicable federal, state, and local regulations requiring units of government receiving CDBG funds to adopt and enforce excessive force provisions. Section 906 of Public Law 101-625 enacted as section 104 of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974, thus requiring subrecipients of federal funds to adopt and enforce a policy prohibiting the use of excessive force by law enforcement agencies within its jurisdiction against any individuals engaged in nonviolent civil rights demonstrations. Um, and board action to adopt the attached resolution adopting the excessive force policy.
Pleasure of the board.
It's a requirement, isn't it?
Yes, ma'am.
It is.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Discussion, I have a question. Isn't this like already a law? I mean, hasn't it already applied?
It, it is already a law, and it's just, it's basically something that we have to have the policy on our books as well to prove to them that we are abiding by it.
But I guess the question I have, this is not our first CDBG project.
Nope.
And I know this is not a new law.
Nope.
Okay, that's, I really, I just, when I was looking, I was like, okay, I guess this is brand new.
It's basically us confirming what we already have to be policy.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Uh, any opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, uh, next item, item number three. Um, the survey has been completed on the new two-acre site adjacent to the Lanark Village Volunteer Fire Department. Uh, the city of Carabel's attorney and the county attorney are now working on the formal transfer of ownership. Do you have a date on it?
Will be the way in?
Yeah.
Uh, I've, I've spoken with, um, Mr. Dan Hartman, who's the attorney of the city of Carabel, about this. He says he's going to be presenting it, as he said, on, at Thursday's meetings. I'm going to assume it's going to be either Thursday of last week or Thursday of this week, um, that, that he's going to present the deed of transfer just back. The, the city's already approved it, but he's taking it back on the public record to show that the survey's been received, and to have the, the deed executed, and then he'll deliver it to me and we'll get it reported. So, it's in progress.
Okay.
Okay, uh, the county's engineers have submitted the attached $20,340 task order based upon the county engineering services contract to complete the civil site engineering and design permitting bidding and construction contract award services for the new site of the Lanark EMS station. The code compliant county-owned station will be a major upgrade for the county's ambulance service and will provide a much-needed permanent base for eastern Franklin County. Board action to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the attached task order with Duberry Engineers to be paid from, from the healthcare trust fund, and I would actually like to add one more parameter once the deed transfer is complete.
All right. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion?
I do, I see.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, when we do the G O four and all that, on this land, then how long are we looking at ground moving for the, for the building?
I would imagine, uh, about six months, because the design has actually already moved for it, because we, you know, we already had architectural services are already in place. Um, so this is basically just readying the site work, um, for the building on this new site. There was no change in design to the building.
Do they want to know when to get it stopped?
Well, in all this, the, uh, the funding for the actual building is being considered by the legislature, correct?
It is, yep. And I'm gonna update the board on that, on Commissioner's comments.
Okay. All right, any other discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Commissioners, uh, oh, did you want to?
No, no, I'm, I'm away.
Oh, okay, okay. Uh, next item, number four. Um, at the November 21st meeting, the board opened construction bids for CR 67 Phase 2 to widen and resurface approximately 1.92 miles of CR 67 from the Crooked River Bridge to SFR 166. Um, this was the second time the project had been bid, and even with the bid alternance to remove paved shoulders along the roadway, the low bid was still more than the original grant award. As FDOT has now provided supplemental funding to fund the base bid, and approval has been granted to use district paving funds for the inclusion of one foot of paved shoulders as a necessary safety upgrade, the county can now move forward with awarding the construction contract. Board action to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the attached construction contract with Roberts &amp; Roberts for $1,835,492.26, and issue the notice to proceed with a construction start date of February 23rd, 2024.
So move.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion? How do we get it so cheap? That's less than a million dollars per mile. I'm, I'm being facetious, but, uh, it is cheaper than it was the last time we did our project.
Uh, it is, yep.
Is it cheaper or more?
We're sliding a little below a million a mile.
Okay, and I, I saw that, you know, the, the road's gonna be widened out to what, 24 feet?
Mm-hmm.
And then you're gonna have two more foot shoulders on each side, or more, so it'll be 26 feet. That would be so good up there, because people running off the road all the time up there.
Much safer, yeah.
And above, uh, 160 feet.
All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, uh, next action, item number five. As part of the new county road paving project, Commissioner Sanders requested striping improvements for her district, and as part of the county's continuing service contract for engineering services, Duberry Engineers has submitted a task order in the amount of $8,350 to create a striping plan and bid specifications for the district's striping needs. One specific area, as requested by Commissioner Sanders, was the beginning of the Welcome Garden on Alligator Point to the Marina, excluding the area that was just resurfaced as part of the Alligator Driver Vettment Project. Board action to approve the attached District 2 striping task order with Duberry Engineers.
Second.
You have some other statements here?
Uh, and also, I just received, um, a list of roads and, uh, resurfacing, or actually resurfacing needs and also striping needs from, uh, the county road department. So I'll be getting with each one of you to, um, let you know if there were some roads that, that we need to include in these task orders.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, uh, next action, item number six. Commissioner Kroom has also asked to complete a comprehensive large-scale striping improvement in his district, and the resurfacing of Laurel Street between 9th and 10th, and repair of the intersection at Fred Meyer and 19th. As part of the county's continuing service contract for engineering services, Duberry Engineers has submitted task orders for $13,300 to develop the comprehensive striping plan and bid specifications for the district's needs, and $15,430 for the engineering bid specification, survey, and design of the roadway resurfacing. Um, and as you can see from, uh, the attached list in my report, uh, there were quite a few roads that were included for resurfacing within that district. Um, and board action to approve the attached District 3 task orders with Duberry Engineers.
So move, um, with question.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward. Second by Commissioner Amos, please proceed, Commissioner.
So, we're, we're doing all this, um, now this does include, like, stormwater drainage, that's gonna be included in their engineering services, right?
Um, as far as for engineering services for the resurfacing, yes.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
I don't want to, I, like I told you before, moving forward, I want to make sure that when we do resurface and repaint, resurface our roads, I want to make sure that we do it properly so that the neighbors don't get, you know, inundated with flooding and things, so.
It's a new world, for sure.
Oh, yes. All right, any more discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? Five of them.
Uh, next action, item number seven. Commissioner Amos requested quotes from the existing county road paving contractor, Roberts &amp; Roberts, to repair several roads in his district. The attached $43,895 proposal for the Bluff Road work will include the excavation and replacement of 56 linear feet of 18-inch reinforced concrete culvert pipe, reconstruction of 18-inch head walls, asphalt and base. This repair is necessary as the existing culvert pipe is collapsing and causing damage to the road. Unfortunately, this repair will require the road to be cut, which will warrant another patch later in the year once the base material settles. The attached $37,553 proposal for Hathcock Road will include reclamation and resurfacing of a section that is in poor condition. Board action to approve the two change order proposals from Roberts &amp; Roberts for Bluff and Hathcock Roads.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Kroom, second by Commissioner Amos. Any discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, um, next action, item number eight, is the TDC funding request for public safety services for the Franklin County Sheriff's Office and the St. George Island Volunteer Fire Department. Um, and, as I kind of went in depth earlier, um, just board action to approve the two cre- requests summarized above to be funded by TDC sales tax proceeds. And both of these requests would be on a reimbursement basis, um, and we will also incorporate the, um, the signage and, uh, some of the other requirements into the reimbursement request procedures.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Amos.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kroom. Any discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? That's also in favor.
Okay, commissioners, uh, next action, item number nine. Um, and also included in the TDC spending plan was $25,000 earmarked for the replacement of the stage curtains at Chapman Auditorium. The custom curtains and shades will be fixtures of the county-owned building, and the auditorium is currently operated by the local nonprofit, The Plan Handle Players, and the auditorium provides a much-needed entertainment venue for tourists. Pursuant to the county bid policy, when a quote does not exceed $25,000, two quotes must be received. Pursuant to the county bid policy, when a quote does not exceed twenty five thousand dollars, two quotes must be received. Three are preferred, but only two regional companies could be located specialized, specializing in the construction and installation of theater curtains. The low quote for the custom stage curtains was twenty three thousand, nine hundred sixty six dollars and sixty cents from vendor main stage. A separate quote in the amount of six thousand, five hundred sixty seven dollars was received from Florida Window Coverings to fit the custom blackout shades for the side windows. The Panhandle Players have agreed to fund the additional five thousand, five hundred dollars and sixty cents needed for the improvements at the auditorium. Board action to approve up to twenty five thousand dollars to be paid by T D C's sales tax proceeds to replace the custom curtains and shades at Cap, at Chapman Auditorium in Appalachia Cola.
So move with comment.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward. Second by Commissioner Sanders. Commissioner Ward, please proceed.
I hope these people wear masks when they take that curtain down because it's probably got, what, a hundred years of dust in there? I don't want to see them at, as a patient at the hospital with a breathing issues because they got yelled all the dust. Because that's an old curtain.
That's the respiratory therapist down there.
Any other discussion before we vote? All in favor? Uh, any opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, Commissioners, next action item number ten. Um, Timothy Butler of Coastline Clearing and Land Development has submitted a request to use a two acre parcel owned by the county to the north of Leonard's Landing along Highway ninety eight. Beginning in March, Coastline Clearing will be a subcontractor for F D O T's U S Highway ninety eight resurfacing project. Coastline has requested to be able to clear the front of the property and use the two acre site to stage equipment and road materials. It has been the county's hope to one day use this area for overflow parking for Leonard's Landing and this initial site work and staging would assist in working towards that goal. Board action to approve the use of the two acres north of Leonard's Landing as a staging site for the U S ninety eight resurfacing project.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Amison. Any discussion?
I have.
This way.
I have. Can I go ahead?
Yep.
Uh, I'm glad to see that, uh, we've got some local companies being subcontractors for D O T projects. I'm glad to see that. That's a lot of money that can be put in here.
On, Mr. Chairman, on, to add to that note, I'm glad to see that F D O T's starting the resurfacing project. This has been long awaited for a long time. And, um, I was wondering whether they were going to start, um, it's obviously an alligator point. So for them to be able to request to set up a staging, uh, area is, promise it, it's about to start happening.
Oh, yeah.
People about to see some activity and I like that, so.
Yeah. We'll have to, Commissioner Ward to go along with that. So one of the, they had a, a sooner date for the project between East Point and Carabel. But after the, uh, they were trying to, they've been trying to line up with the live in shoreline project as well. Because they can't have, you know, you can't be trying to repave a road that you currently have people with dump trucks trying to get to a job site, so. So, so it looks like from conversations with D O T that the landing date for that is spring of twenty twenty five to do between East Point and Carabel. Because they're looking for that other to be done and out of the way. Just to make sure everybody's aware. Any other discussion before we vote? All in favor? Uh, any opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, Commissioners, uh, next action item number eleven. Um, F W C has approved the bid specification packet for the Old Ferry Dock Boat Ramp Project. And, um, we also have the bid specifications available now from the architects for the structural sealant and roof repairs at the main courthouse, uh, which are being funded by the American Rescue Plan Funds. Uh, board action to approve advertising for construction bids for the Old Ferry Dock Boat Ramp and courthouse repair projects.
So move.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Ward.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Amison. Any discussion? I'm glad to see this is why we get there too. This is another one of those four or five year projects. Because they've, they're, they're redesigned the whole thing. It's going to be a double width ramp. There's going to be a dock in between, they're putting new seawalls up. Uh, it's going to be a lot nicer than it was before. It, it served its purpose in its time, but as we have more, uh, people looking to access the waterways, we need more access, not less. So I'm glad we're finally getting to a place of, uh, trying to actually do the repairs and the, the changes. Any other discussion? All in favor? Uh, any opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, Commissioners, uh, next action item, uh, number thirteen. The county has received a three hundred and forty two thousand, nine hundred sixty dollar grant through the F D E P recreational trails grant program to resurface the Saint George Island multi-use path in the commercial district from Third Street West to Third Street East. In addition to resurfacing, the project will also include the installation of surface warning tactile strips at seven intersections and will construct a small rest area beside the path near both ends of the project area. That will include a bench, waste receptacle, low maintenance native trees for shade and a bicycle repair station. Uh, board action to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the attached grant award agreement.
So move.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Amison. Any discussion, Commissioners? Seeing none, all in favor? Uh, any opposed? That's unanimous.
And, uh, as far as the next item, it's just board, board information miscellaneous project updates. Um, you know, Commissioner Ward had already mentioned that the SOD had gone in at Vrooman. Uh, park's looking fantastic. I'd submitted the final reimbursement request to D E O actually yesterday, uh, for that portion. Uh, we're still wrapping up the Firdap project, um, so still have some work to do on the dugouts. Um, let's see. Uh, we are getting close to, uh, the time extension for that project. Um, I, I believe A E Com was actually reaching out to the contractor to see, um, if, if they are requesting an additional time extension or not on it. But hopefully that will be, um, finished relatively quickly. Um, we also have, um, the Triumph for the, the Triumph pre-application for the first responder communication system. That was, uh, has already been submitted to Triumph. They did say that the project would be eligible and for us to go ahead and start working on the full application process. Um, and hopefully we can get our application in front of them, uh, in April, um, at their meeting.
I, I know you were listening in your office.
Yes.
That's where the total conversation came from, Commissioner.
Mr. Aaron, before we proceed past you, a couple of things. Uh, when we had Hurricane Sally, we had a, uh, culvert fail in East Point that had to be replaced. And I'm noticing I didn't think nothing about it. Honestly, it's just an oversight. We were talking about the, uh, different stuff that needs to be done in District Four. How they need to come back and re, redo it sometime later. That never was done on, on North Bay Shore. So I don't know if we need a task order or what we need to do or just use the same contractor that did the original work. But that's, there's a dip in that road and that's probably the reason why. So we do need to, uh, try to, and I think it was Roberts and Roberts that did it. I'm not a hundred percent. We, we do need that repair. The other thing I want to ask is also with Dewberry, I would like for us to, uh, consult with them and get, I think we need to move to more of a vendor area on Saint George Island instead of Avery County right of way. I have an, an area in mind, but I think we need to get with them and, uh, and try to see if they can give us some kind of, uh, layout or whatever they would have to give us to show us how many we could fit in that, uh, parcel land that the county owns that's, uh, to the west of where Collins, uh, is at, in that office.
Okay.
Uh, I don't know what it would, what all it would entail. We might put four there or six there, but I'm sure if we were able to proceed with that, we're probably going to have to look at amended ordinance so it's not every county right of way. We also are probably going to need to add signage and say this is the vendor parking area, uh, to make it appropriate for everybody. And again, I have, to not have the pressure of, to be honest with you, it, it, it kind of affects everybody just to do it anywhere you want to do it. It, it seems haphazard and I think it's time for us to move past that. So if we can, do you need a vote of the board to do that or can you just engage with them and come back to us with a proposal?
I will go ahead and engage with Dewberry and come back with some sort of, you know, conceptual site layout for you all.
Okay, and one other question is, I think we have money in our current budget for economic development. What, what avenue do we need to proceed to try to actually make that a reality? As far as either hiring somebody or what is our next step? Are you waiting on the board in your direction?
No, where we left the commission, we, you're going to reach out to the company that works with, uh, Will Cola County and you and I are going to set up a meeting to meet with them and then we bring that back to the board and have a discussion.
That's cool. Just, I have a bunch of notes here, so I'm just going through them. All right, we'll do that.
Welcome to my world.
All right, thank you, Ms. Aaron.
Mr. Chairman, I've got something for, from Ms. Aaron. Um, I, I know that, I'm glad that you heard that, that Ms. Virginia sent you the roads. Because I know that's what, I know District Five wasn't on these requests because I was waiting. I wanted to compare my list with their list to ensure that we got everything covered that needed to be covered. So I, I just checked my email, I didn't get that list. If you poured it to me.
Okay, yes, yes, we do.
And us get together on it because I have a feeling that it's going to mirror each other quite a bit. So, um, we'll, we'll get together on that. So thank you for bringing that up and letting us know that you got that email. And I don't know if you heard earlier, but thank you for your work on Vrooman Park and the Firdap grant and every, Firdap grants and everything that went along with it. So I appreciate that.
All right, any thoughts from Ms. Griffin?
Just one thing. I asked earlier about the construction that's going on at Walnut Creek up there on sixty seven. Have you had any updates on that?
You were reading when she just, I, I asked her to give you updates, but I saw you reading your document.
The construction inspection engineers, A E Com is actually reaching out to the contractor to see where they are on the project. Um, but I know they're, they're, you know, moving forward at break next week now, um, but I'm not sure if, if they will be finished within the timeframe or not at this point.
But we, back in December, we gave them a forty five day extension.
Yep.
And it's knocking on that forty five days.
It is, it is.
I'm going to tell you something, they have not done a good job of it. I know they've had a lot of water and stuff, but they have not done a good job in my opinion. Because I have had nothing but calls after calls, that, like you do on certain areas. And I mean, it's just, anyway, let's, I hope they can get it done pretty quick.
Any thoughts from Ms. Griffin from the board? There's still time. All right, go ahead, Mr. Maron, you're up next.
My commissioner, I'd like to skip to page, uh, twenty six, item eleven of my report because I am holding him hostage. You cannot leave, the deputy is not going to let him out. Um, and I wish I'd done this earlier when more people were in the room. I'd like to thank Mr. John Solomon for his hard work on making Franklin County a standout at Rural Counties Day held at the Capitol in the courtyard on Thursday, December twenty fifth. I also like to thank Commissioner Amison for donating the shrimp that Mr. Solomon bought and gave away really quickly at the event. Didn't last too long. Um, but if Mr. Solomon is willing, the county probably plans to participate next year because it was a really good thing. Opportunity Florida has offered to assist the county with this year's event registration fee. They're going to pay some, some of that fee. We just got the invoice. Once we process the check, we send that to them and they'll refund the county for part of that fee. Uh, Commissioner Kroom and the chairman were there to help promote and I think they may have a few words, especially Commissioner Kroom. You got in some pictures.
It was, uh, it was a great event. Uh, John, John and, uh, his assistant did an outstanding job. Thank you, John. I, I think we know what to expect next year. I was able to meet with, uh, Roy Baker from Opportunity Florida. Um, he the one enlightened me about the, for reimbursement. Um, I was able to briefly speak with Senator Simon that was in the court, courtyard and, but it was, uh, it's, it's a real good thing for us. I think we, we need to continue to do things and do outreach like that.
Yeah.
I think it will. A lot of people asked about you too, Mr. Solomon.
That's what everybody's challenging you. Yeah, uh, hopefully next year, because I'm six and a half and knee surgery, hopefully next year I'll be able to climb both, both hills. I got criticized at the last board meeting real bad about it, but that's okay. We deal with it, you know, and, uh, but I got to look after Cheryl now. But those folks that come to talk to you and ask about me, they're going to like you. They're going to like you because you're a good man, Commissioner Kroom.
Well, it's a, it, it was a very good, uh, it's a well attended event. There are actually more, more people there than I thought was going to be there, guys. When you start talking about rural days, you're like, ah, there'd be a couple of people there, you know what I mean? It's a, if, 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 if there's anything that challenged me is to make sure that I check my own mentality to say that, yeah, we might be in a small area, but we're still important. You have to put your own best foot forward, which we did, and Mr. Solomon, you helped us do that. Thank you for that. Uh, it was a very well attended event and there was a, there was a lot of good, good discussions that come out of that day.
That's right. Well, I, let me give you a little history and then y'all understand in a minute that we, I come back at three and what. Um, but up there at the Capitol, when those counties like Palm Beach, Revoy, Broward, Miami-Dade County, it is total chaos because all those people have influx into the Capitol to get their knee. And it kind of like made the smaller counties feel left out. So we, many years ago, we let, uh, we left the impression on the people, hey, us small, small counties matter too.
Absolutely.
So that's how that started was to give us, the small counties, the opportunity to show off our wares. I call them wares because it's like a flea market. Of our counties to let, to let them know that we're just as important as those larger counties. And now it comes off good, you know? Because you'll have a lot of those representatives and senators from the larger counties love to see Franklin County come up there because they know they're going to get some good feedback.
That's the difference.
Speaking of seafood, Commissioner Amison, thank you for the shrimp. We had delayed start, we delayed, we delayed ourselves from selling or selling, but, uh, giving the shrimp and we, we was out within like forty five minutes.
I know.
It was, it was really, because I was thinking like, who, who eat boiled shrimp up here?
Well, did y'all take the boat out there? Did y'all take the boat up there and put the shrimp in the boat?
Michelle, the, the, the boat is not available. We have big metal serving pan. And when Commissioner Kroom got there, it was, we put it in there, it was full. He walked around one lap and it was empty.
So maybe by next year, we can get into another boat deal, you know, that puts all the shrimp in there and you can pick it up if it gets.
So let, let, let me encourage Commissioner Amison wrong because I love to do this. So, um, Commissioner Kroom went over to Will Cola County and tried their oyster. Uh, gi- give me that face again when you said you had to. So next year, maybe, maybe we can find a way to do both shrimp and oysters and show them what it really, what it's supposed to taste like.
You know what would be a wonderful thing? If we could have the oysters out of the Appalachia Cola Bay.
That would be wonderful.
That would be great.
It would be wonderful.
Wouldn't that be great?
Be awesome.
Hey, we got to go in.
You're talking about getting them legally or illegally? Because it's not over.
That's what I'm saying.
I know exactly where you was going. If you caught my drift, I don't think next year we're going to be.
But I don't think twenty five is going to be it either.
But anyway, that's.
But we can always hope.
Yes.
But now, you know, going back on this, you know, what, what the big plan is, is we charge them next year and we'll pay for, you know, bring some revenue back into the county.
Oh, my goodness.
When we go there, you know, it's like about five dollars a plate on.
Oh, my God.
You hook them, you get them snagged and then you suck them.
Y'all gonna have us banned if I'm not there.
But all kidding aside, John, really, I want to thank you because I, there's no way I could have in any way begin to coordinate to the level that you did and get it. Got such a successful event or make us stand out at that event because it's the first thing we've been in a long time. I really, really want to thank you.
Well, we had the materials and we, that's what we do is promote this county, not just for tourists, but for the legislative because that, what their decisions affect where we can spend the money and how we can do it here in Franklin County. And speaking of what Ms. Cheryl said, Palm Beach has their own day. Miami-Dade has their own legislative day. Rural County is all the rural counties for a day. So, I mean, that's a big difference for them to come in. We saw all the legislators, like Commissioner Kroom said, um, Commissioner Simon was, I mean, Representative Simon was there. All the other, you know, they came to the booth, they wanted the shrimp, you know, the, did that come from Appalachia Cola? That's where we picked it up at, yes, sir. Um, but it was amazing. Of course, the shrimp were beautiful. Thank you, Commissioner Amison. That didn't hurt. Yeah.
But you did a great job, John.
Yeah, it wa, it was enjoyable and it was something that really helped the county. And I've told all of you that individually, that was a big boost for our county. And sign us up, we're there again, whether it's oysters and shrimp, shrimp, both will take care of it. And, um, I did tell Commissioner Jones, I said, we got to replenish the, the koozies and the giveaways because they like those up there.
Let me ask a question, John. Did y'all, um, advertise the activities that we have going on down here, like the flugs, the butts and all?
Yes, ma'am, we had the visitor guides, the calendar events. Yes, ma'am. We had the visitor guides, the calendar events, the, the maps. Um, we have different, um, pamphlets that T D C, as you know, have paid for over the years from Appalachian, East Pointe, Carabao. We had all those presented. We left with a whole lot less than what we came with. And it was a big difference, uh, Commissioner Kroom saw that. They took, we had a little bit of visitor guides left, and actually the visitor center that's there at the Capitol took those from us and put them in there with the rest of them.
Well, and I'll, I'll say, just to kind of wrap this up, uh, speaking with Richard Williams and Roy Baker after the event from Opportunity Florida, they said, Ricky, you just don't know how good it was to see Franklin County there. They said, look, entities like ours, Florida's Great Northwest, any other entities that are trying to help the county, we can only go so far. If they don't see the county there, he, he said, it makes more difference than you know. So, they, they were elated that we were a part of it, and you helped make that happen, so thank you.
Thank y'all for giving us the opportunity.
That, that echoes the, the sentiment that Opportunity Florida made when we was at that trial, that we need to, we need to be, you know, they, they were talking about the airport here, they're talking about that, we just gotta have that presence and sell ourself, you know?
Just one more comment, Mr.?
Yes.
I am so glad that Opportunity Florida has changed their direction that they were going in. Because the way that they were going at one time did not include Franklin County. And I'm, I'm glad to see that they're going in the opposite direction where it does include Franklin County.
They made a conscientious effort to come to talk to Commissioner Kroom and, and, and thank him for being there, so.
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Solomon.
Yeah, y'all have a good day.
Uh, back to item number three, page twenty-three. In April, the board, County Commission established the A O E D, that advisory board. At that time, the administrative responsibilities that include minutes, agendas, communication with board members were assigned to Mr. Mossteller. He's interim airport manager. Well, it's become pretty apparent that Mr. Mossteller Airport Maintenance and Operation Responsibilities were not considered when he was tasked with the A O E D administrative responsibilities, as he's very busy with airport maintenance and operations. Some of that commissioners stem from this, the new lease that we entered with, we entered into with the F B O, which put maintenance back onto the county and away from the F B O that contributed to that. That in mind, Mr. Mossteller and I discussed and agreed to allow Mr. Tom Mesher, he's currently the A O E D Vice Chairman, that he's responsible for meeting minutes. Well, it became very convenient for Mr. Mesher to assist with agendas and some, very limited, Attorney Schuler, very limited, board communication. However, Mr. Mesher's seat on the A O E D Board limits his ability to completely assist with administrative responsi- responsibilities. Namely, he cannot, he cannot communicate with the rest of the board members. That puts him in trouble. That put him, puts him on that ethics gray line that we don't want him, cause he works really hard. Besides all this, he also, he also helps Ted and Scott on, on the airport. So, what I'm asking the County Commission to allow is to allow Mr. Mesher to temporarily step down from the A O E D Board as a member and serve as his coordinator, kind of some of what I do, but for, for the board. That will allow him to do minutes, agendas, and, and communicate with all A O E D Board members without the restrictions of being a board member. He's agreed to serve as a coordinator on a voluntary basis, and in about ninety days, the County Commission can discuss, discuss and possibly decide on a more permanent solution. His seat on the A O D will not be filled, I'm asking, not telling, uh, until the County Commission decides on a permanent plan for the A O E D administrative responsibilities. We've discussed this with everyone that's affected, so I'm asking the board to go along with this temporary reassignment for Mr. Mesher from the Board Vice Chairman to the Board Coordinator.
Mr. Chairman, that was, uh, my question. I always make sure everybody's aware and okay with it. I see that Mr. Mesher's on the, the meeting. Um, if he doesn't have anything to say, I, I will make a motion to approve or authorize this.
I'll say it with comment.
Okay, we have a motion to approve this change by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Amerson. Commissioner Amerson, please proceed.
Basically, and I, as y'all probably know, I've been in communication with everybody involved in this change. Well, this is, I think I've said this before, and I'm probably echoing this. We ask these folks to come in on a voluntary basis and, 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 you know, serve on these committees and boards. Once we got that airport board reestablished and Michael Aaron could, can attest to what I'm about to say, I didn't realize that the airport board was gonna take off and start running in directions, which is wonderful. I mean, they're running in great directions. They've just got a lot of stuff going on, which y'all know. Uh, going back, well, I was about to say, going back to that, is we don't wanna take these folks in the community that's coming in and they're dedicating their time and all that, again, in, in a voluntary basis, and put them in a position where they could potentially be in a legal issue with sunshine. So, that's, that's the reason why we're, we're just kinda shifting there. That way, we don't, uh, have that issue and it doesn't smear the airport, the county in any way going forward in the near future, so, just to let y'all know.
Okay. Any other discussion before we vote? All in favor? Any opposed? Is unanimous.
All right, item four. Unfortunately, Courtney is out sick today, she's out yesterday, and, and today she was gonna give you an update. With code enforcement, I'll do the best I can based on what she's been telling me. So, um, uh, she's working with the, um, the, the institute, I mean, I got it right here, the John Scott Daily Florida Institute of Government. You know, they have these trainings and certifications. They do them once every so often, and they do them in different parts of the state. However, they told her, and I got the e- we have, we have the email, that basically how it's done in most places, that you can start an employee doing code enforcement as long as they get the first basic certification, the fundamentals of code enforcement, within a year of them doing code enforcement. So, the discussion today, commissioners, and maybe possible action, how do you wanna proceed? Are you willing to, uh, let staff work for the sheriff? He starts code enforcement, pick a couple deputies and get certification before, you know, years end? Probably have to do it before even budget if we wanna continue that way. Or you guys wanna wait until they can get a certi- certified deputies, certified in code enforcement deputies to do this job? I, Courtney and I kinda need to know what direction this board wants to go in.
So, let me ask a question, Ms. Maron. What, what's the holdup with the class?
Because it's only given at a certain, it's like the next class is like three or four months down the road from now, you know?
That's a good one. That's a good class.
So, that's the holdup. We can't, and no, they won't not, they will not send an instructor here to us to, to do that. We have to send their class wherever it is.
When's the next class available, do you know?
That's what I did to Courtney. I, I can, I, Commissioner, I think I'm saving, saying at least three to four months a week, at least. By that time, we're talking, we're, we're getting ready for budget workshops.
Well, and I want y'all to know this too. The last time we did the code enforcement officer thing, I got some bad emails about that too.
We all got.
Did you get them too?
Everybody, I think everybody got those emails.
With that being said.
But with, 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 with that being said though, uh, real quick, um, you know, the, 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 it was about, you know, having law enforcement do the code.
Yeah.
What I, I think a lot of people that did send the emails out took that as their specific area, which was never mentioned in, in, in our conversation as a board. What they don't realize is, is that there are areas in our county that could potentially put, uh, Courtney or anybody else that's not, that, that have the authority or the training as a law enforcement in a, in a dangerous situation.
Yeah.
So, to answer some of those emails in the public platform, that was not directed at any individual or individual area of this county. It was.
Overall.
Overall, and you gotta realize, as a citizen of the county, not every neighborhood looks like yours. So, we have to take that in consideration whenever we make these decisions. And that's why, me personally, and I think I can speak for the rest of the commissioners up here, that's why we went with the law enforcement, because it adds that, uh, blanket of safety.
Commissioner, do you want Courtney to wait until two weeks from today and Courtney get with each of you prior to that to kinda give you more specific information? Cause like, I kinda wrote this with her being here and being able to answer the question. It's up to the board.
Yeah, I, I think that's fine, as long as it's on the next agenda.
That's fine.
I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah.
I'm gonna make a motion to table it to the next.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
I'll make a motion to table this to the next.
To the next meeting, all right. We have a motion to table it to the next meeting from Commissioner Amerson, second from Commissioner Sanders. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
All right, commissioners, uh, which is coming sooner than I thought it would. At three o'clock this afternoon, the board will hear from A R P C in a workshop setting. They were engaged by the county to update the county's comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance. Those, they're gonna present their initial review findings and recommendations and seek, seek board feedback. Uh, anyway, uh, A R P C on behalf of the county applied for and received a fifty thousand dollar cost reimburse- reimbursement Community Planning Technical Assistant Grant Agreement, I'm sorry, Assistant Grant, that will be used to pay for this, uh, for the update, for this project. Um, the agreement is ready for your approval and the chairman's signature, fifty thousand dollars for the update to the comp plan and the zoning ordinance.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Amerson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Commissioners, the landing workshop, I'll cut straight to it. Uh, they, they're ready, if, if the board will allow, to go on Tuesday, March fifth at five. Uh, do I have the board approval to, well, for, well, you want me to advertise or? Yes, yes, to advertise and schedule and advertise this, um, this workshop.
Okay. Pleasure to the board?
You wanna check your schedules quickly, just to make sure, five o'clock, March fifth.
Is that the one?
It's a meeting day.
That's a little St. George Island.
The land is the one, as you come out to St. George Island.
Yeah, okay. That's the one. Okay.
Yep, and it is a workshop that they've asked for.
Workshop, no, no decisions made.
One question, what time are we planning on doing that workshop?
Five.
Okay, it is gonna be, okay. All right, yeah, that's perfect.
Commissioner Kroom, you good? All right, so what's, pleasure to the board then?
Uh, so moved.
All right, we have a motion to approve back. Or do we already have motions on this?
Not sure.
Do we? Okay. Sorry, too many motions today.
It's a long day. I said.
All right, any other discussion before we vote? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
All right, item seven, I'm not even gonna read, so we need two members for the canvassing board, one, we need a primary and an alternate. And we can, how do we set up?
Process of elimination.
No, how do we do the thing with the vote? Were we telling them and we're?
Voluntary.
Yeah, volunteer, Commissioner Amerson, because he accidentally, accidentally, already certified.
After, you know, I fasted for like thirty minutes, I prayed on it, I thought about it, and I'm going to voluntarily be on the canvassing board.
He fasted for thirty minutes.
Well, it has, it's automatically.
And I did, and I want you to know, I did it out of compassion for you with that long drive, because I figured these three were gonna be in an election cycle, so it was gonna fall to us. And I, and I, hey, I threw myself out in the road for you, Commissioner Sanders.
I will say this, Mr. Shamen, um, it's, it's an eye-opening experience, and I think you're gonna enjoy it. I know you, you fasted for thirty minutes, you didn't think, you know, long and hard about it, but it is, I learned a lot. It was a very interesting process. I think you're gonna enjoy it. I learned a lot.
But I did accidentally take the class, so I figured I'm.
He's already certified.
Five hours in my life, just.
And you did the, you did the class, didn't you?
Yes.
You, you can be the real one and I'll be the.
That's what I was, that's what I was getting at. I'm, I'm, I got your back, I got you.
So, do we have a motion to approve that?
I made that motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Amerson, second by two, Commissioner Ward and Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion?
I believe that's the first time a commissioner actually made a motion to put theirself on something, so.
It don't happen very many times, I'm promising that. All, all in favor?
So reflected.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
All right, Commissioners, Commissioner Amerson, speaking of that, uh, the streetlight on Conno Pluff Road in Timbling Court, um, Duke Energy quoted nineteen forty and fifty cents for upfront installation and a recurring ten dollars and sixty-six cents a month for this, uh, traffic, oh, it's traffic, Jesus, for the streetlight.
God forbid, traffic light.
Yes, let me not get, get myself in more trouble. I already am. I just need a board approval to go ahead and sign off on that, uh, for Duke Energy.
Make a motion. Okay, we have a motion to approve back to Mr. Kroom.
I'll second.
Second by two.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Amerson, Commissioner Ward, Commissioner Kroom, please proceed.
This, this, this area right here is really dark here, so it needs to be there.
Thank you.
Any other discussion before we vote?
I have. There's, there's a lot of places around the county, we discussed this before, that really need streetlights. Got a place off of River Road that the kids stay there for their bus stop. I know one of the parents was talking to me about it.
Let me know, cause Mr. Chairman, not interrupt, go ahead.
If, if you don't mind, if, if that costs ten dollars and sixty-six, sixty-six cents a month, I can get it out in a minute. Uh, let's look around and see what light we need around the county.
It'd be better, Commissioner, honestly, if you, you, if you guys tell me, and I, I said Duke there, because at one time, uh, the chairman and I had tried to get with the school board, and get with the transportation group, but then they told us, well, uh, school bus stops change, they change every year. So, we were like, oh, no, I'm sorry, it's Commissioner Ward, yeah, it was, yes, and we were like, well, we can't pay for, for streetlights, you know? We try to find central locations to, but I think that's what we settled with, central locations to put the streetlights in case they move the bus stop from the end of this street to the end of that street. But if you guys have somewhere, let me know, cause Duke is very responsive and they do a good job.
My, my light, my light, there was about three or four maybe that I was on, and, and there were children.
Yes.
Get on the bus.
That's, that's fine.
And it's like Anthony said, very, very dark.
Especially.
Especially if you get in those stretches like from the curb to curb, it turns into fifty or sixty mile an hour.
Now, Commissioner Amerson and I have learned a hard lesson. I would ask, before you bring the, the traffic, Jesus, the streetlight to me, that you check with the neighbors, because it's been a few times, we put a light and the neighbor's like, I don't like that light in my living room, blah, 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 that type of deal.
And another thing too that I learned through this process is look at the poll. If there's a transformer there, that's the poll, that's gonna.
Yes.
That's where the lights go.
Well, I was just saying, that will cost the least amount.
It keeps the cost down. If they have to put a transformer, that's when the cost, the installation cost goes up.
Mr. Chairman, I can elaborate too. I know, uh, back when I kind of was first on the board, that was my biggest thing, was the school bus stops. And I got a list of school bus stops in the whole county, and I met with, I think it was Mike from Duke, and we had talked about it. And that's when they did say that the school bus stops changed. I tried to figure out a way, uh, and I, I didn't know there was a school bus on River Road stop. I know that there was one that there at Lighthouse Estates that I got a light put up at, and then there's one on, uh, Bryan Street in C C Land, I got one put up.
One for the guy.
Okay, well, let me know, cause I'd be more than happy to, I mean, I, again, I tell people all the time, if I don't know.
Yeah.
I'm not a mind reader. I've, you know, please reach out to me. My, I've advertised my, my cell phone number, people know they, I'm very easily reached. Um, if I don't know, you don't tell me, I don't know, so if you can give me the.
I had to contact him and ask him where on River Road, because he said he was going along there and he's all of a sudden, he didn't, and he, there was the kid.
Yeah.
Yeah, just let me know. Cause I'm all about safety too, and I, I'm all about that, so, and ten dollars sixty-six a month is nothing compared to somebody's life.
All right, so any more discussion before we vote? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
All right, we're getting there. And I'm, Commissioner, again, I'm gonna summarize here. So, basically, Commissioner, with all the added buildings, and, you know, some of the offices moving to the East Pointe location, I need somebody in charge of maintenance and custodial facilities, especially, you know, if I'm away from the courthouse more often. What I'm asking the board to do, again, on a temporary basis, allow me to elevate Mr. Shane Phillips, who is currently your, your maintenance custodian, to maintenance coordinator. Let him become the supervisor of that department. Let all calls, incidents, requests go through him, and then he will come to me and/or Aaron, depending on the request, if he needs additional, uh, if he needs additional help or assistance with it. But I re, and, and in addition, and the clerk testified to this. So, there's a lot more court going on, because our circuit judge is trying his best to catch up and stop me mad when I'm wrong. He's trying to catch up with all the COVID cases, so a lot, custodian and maintenance has needed a lot more in, in the courts. I, I just need somebody in charge. It's, it's got to that point. It was fine back in the day when Allen did it, and it was only the courthouse, the annex, and maybe the public defender's office. We got a lot more buildings going on, Commissioner.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am.
It's Jimmy Yelton. Increase in salary?
He said, let's try it out for about ninety days, let's see how it works out, and then if, if the board is good with it and he's good with it, then we could discuss increasing salary. He doesn't wanna take a, a salary increase at this moment, not knowing what he's getting himself into, cause I'm, I'm, I'm kinda asking, ask.
Well, that's first, I will say.
Telling him, but I am really asking him to please, help, help me out with this and give me a try and let me know.
Mr. Chairman, uh, uh, thank you for bringing up the salary. Mr. Chairman, thank you for bringing up the salary increase, because I think the more, more roles you get, the more money you should get paid.
Yes.
But, you know, I think this is a good interim thing to do, and of course, he's okay with this, otherwise y'all wouldn't have agreed to it.
Ah, sure would, yeah.
But, you're right, we do have a lot more buildings, and I know that I've been keeping him busy over it, because Carabel, you know, the annex, he has gone over there as well, and that's a pretty good little haul for him. I want to make a motion to do this, and I guess we'll just, you'll bring it back to us after the 90th day, or before then if he decides?
Or before then, he said, okay, I could do this, but I want more money, then I'll bring it back to you before the 90th day.
Well, nobody knows these buildings like Mr. Shane, so.
They sure don't.
We have a motion to approve this request from Commissioner Ward, we have a second from Commissioner Amerson. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Commissioners, moving along, we do this every year, well, I'm not sure if we've done Shrimp Fest before, but anyway, we need to close Chili Boulevard for both Shrimp Fest and Chili Cookoff. The dates, let me see, February 10th is Shrimp Fest, and March 4th is Chili Cookoff, because the sheriff will not close or assist unless the county commission says that gives it an okay.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Amerson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
I want to blow through some of these informational items. The RCSC chairman, they're changing it from Mr. Taylor, from Jackson County, to Mr. McClellan from Calhoun County. You guys have any objection? Because I'm actually the representative, though, I, I'm not going to ask today, but they did ask for a county commission to sit on that board. Right now, I'm the alternate, so I'm the representative. So right now, they just want to make sure you guys are good with changing chairmen, so you don't have any objections to it, they have to ask.
Mr. Chairman, I, I might be showing, I might be showing my blonde streaks right now, but what is that Rapparian County Stakeholder Coalition about?
The Atlas Call of Flap, Chattahoochee.
Oh, okay, okay.
It's just, it's just what I have. Because they have more than, you could probably do it better than I could, but they have more than just county commissions on it.
Yeah.
That's the whole waterfall.
We had, we had a big presence on this committee right.
We used to.
Because it was Dave, Dave McCrain.
Yes.
Dave McCrain was one of the founders of it, so we, we, we've always had a big presence. And somebody that's in the CPB industry or around the CPB industry really needs to be on it.
Voluntary, you've been voluntary, Commissioner Amerson.
Somebody that likes seafood and likes orange juice.
He's the rookie.
But anyway, I don't have any problem, Chad Taylor, for as long as I can remember, had been the chairman of that committee, so if Mr. Jim wants to do it, and they want Mr. Jim to do it, I mean, I would have no objection if they did.
All right. And for this, I didn't need a motion, I just need to make sure you guys don't object to it in any way, that's all. Okay, here's the sad news that we kind of talked about earlier, so Dr. Sanala, Dr. Nizio, they're, they're leaving. They said it'd be within the next three months. They'll give me a date, when they have firmed a date. Right now, they're in the process of, you know, cleaning up the office, trying to help their patients find other primary doctors. It's really sad that this is happening, commissioners, but it is what it is, and, you know.
Mr. Chairman, I, I know we've been here a while, but this is something we really need to discuss, and I hit on it earlier. We, we need to engage with CHP, we need to give Michael direction on that, and, and let's get moving with that.
We are.
Yeah.
We are.
Because we, we're, we're in a bigger crisis with, you know, with just primary care issues. You know, just from a, a personal standpoint, my, my father was a patient with, with Sanala's office, and, you know, they, they're elderly now, they have prescription refills. Now, you've got everybody scrambling, trying to find a primary care provider, and guess what? We've got Dr. Farr, Carmichael, and, and, and Weems, and, you know, we just now getting all that cleaned up, you know, with, with, with Conrad getting his qualification or whatnot, but they, you know, there's prescription refills, medications that people can't go without. I, I just feel like CHP, and I, I did a little brief history, and, and like I've said many times, I'm not beating up on what happened, I'm only looking at what we're doing forward. CHP at one time really helped the county, shaved some money or whatnot. To be honest with you, I have yet to find a county employee that likes it, I'm just being fair. You know, everybody that I talked to, you know, their deductibles went up and all kind of this and that. All that out the door. We should be actively engaging a new insurance company every five years anyway, just to keep them honest. I mean, they got, how long have they been there now? 16 years, 12 years, 14? How long we been with CHP?
Let, let me ask a question. Do we get pricing from more than CHP every budget year? Do we test the waters?
Not every year. I know last year, we had actually talked to an agent from the Florida Sheriff's Association, and they actually market through United Healthcare. But one thing to note, with Capital Health Plan, we've actually been able to roll back to where we were, we've been with them, I believe, for almost five years now, or possibly even more.
I think it's longer than that.
Yeah, I believe it, it could be longer than that, I have to go, I'm sorry, I'm not in budget mode, so it's not all like.
My, my whole point is, it just keeps the company honest, you know what I mean? Because, you know, they, they tend to get complacent, every company does, over a period of time, and, and it's just our duty, I feel, as commissioners, to, to keep it in check, you know. But going back to that, we really need to start negotiating, or, or talking with CHP, and seeing if we can bridge some of the obstacles. That would open up our, our medical issues somewhat. I mean, I'm not going to say it's going to fix everything, but it will give us options, to give our citizens options.
Yes.
You know.
And I will talk to you guys after the meeting individually about some information I got, even while Miss May was standing right there, so. But that, that's in the process to meet with CHP.
And Mr. Chairman, I, I actually reached out to, and I think I had this conversation with Aaron, the Florida Sheriff's Association, Bay County, actually, the commissioner, their county employees are on a different, different insurance plan, so I reached out to them, and, you know, with the Florida League of Cities, Florida Sheriff's Association, you know, we could also back off, kind of backpack off of them to get discounts, but the problem with, you know, CHP is HMO, and you've got Florida Blue, which is PPO, the problem is, you know, it's self-funded, and you have to have a minimum of 500 employees, and we don't have that, right, Aaron?
It is self-funded, so a lot of times you will see, like, there's a low introductory price on some of those plans, and then in a few years, you usually circle back around and go back to CHP. So sometimes they're able to be advantageous. It's not always popular with employees to actually change insurance carriers, because that usually comes outfitted with a particular group of doctors. And I will say, even when the county had Blue Cross Blue Shield, employee, although it was a very good plan at the time, whenever employees would actually have something major happen, you know, even the $500 deductible at the time, which I'm sure is out of reach now, was a huge hurdle for them. So they, they are very fond with CHP and their copayment schedules. You know, you can actually have an outpatient procedure for $200, you know, or a certain amount, like, you know, you go, you're actually inpatient hospital stays, $200 per day, up to five days maximum. Whereas with Blue Cross Blue Shield or some of the other providers, it would be 20% co-insurance. You know, so that's just something to keep in mind. I know CHP, I know you mentioned that you didn't think it was very popular with employees.
Everyone, I want to get some names from you, because I'm going to circle around talking to them, because everybody I talked to.
Yeah, I feel like it's very popular.
I'll give you one.
Yeah.
I'll give you one.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, can I real quick? When I had my first hip surgery in, in May of 2012, we had Blue Cross Blue Shield then, $5,000 part before I could even have it. Okay, when I had CHP in 2015, nothing, and I had it done. So I mean, that's the difference in it, I think.
And, and that's actually the reason why they're the number one insurer within the county. You know, the school board's with them, we're with them, they are the number one insurance provider.
But I'm not, I'm not just one person.
Now, is there different levels of Blue Cross Blue Shield? Because I know when I was with, you know, state government, my, mine was 180 for one person or 10 people, you know, and I paid $15 for a doctor visit, and maybe if I met my deductible, it was either $10 or $20 for a specialist. So like, that's what I'm saying about tier, because that was a real good insurance plan. The other issue is, you know, okay, CHP, we, that's what we own right now, all good and fine, as long as we in this area, but let's, let's go, let us go to that FAC conference, and one of us got to go to that hospital, then we paying that out of, out of pocket.
Actually, you are covered for emergency care.
We are.
You can go anywhere for emergency care. They actually bill right through Blue Cross Blue Shield's network as well, so emergency care is always covered.
If you have to be admitted that we, so, so, Commissioner, let, let, let me say this, that's, let.
Well, Mr. Chairman.
Let's just tackle the elephant in the room. The problem we're having with CHP, it's not the coverage, not the deductibles, is that they are cutting Gulf County out of in-network. That's it. I mean.
Why that?
Because they're in direct competition with TMH, there's the elephant.
Yeah. That's, that's what we've heard, you know, and so, we have to, that's why, you know, what.
In Cape Town County.
Well.
TMH has got a little bit stronger. TMH has pretty much got leverage over CHP. They might not own one, but they've got some type of leverage there, they hold their feet to the fire. You know, if, if, you know, like I was saying, I'm not meaning to cut you off there, Michael, but.
Yep, that's right.
Let's, let's reach out to them, if not, we'll have to reach out Representative Shula. We can, we can go higher with this, but we need to, we need to try to bridge that, that obstacle right there if we can.
We are doing.
And I think it would open up a lot of medical, you know, whether, no matter who we're with, I'm just saying, that would, that would alleviate a lot of the stranglehold we have as far as options medically, like here in our community.
We're, we're, we're working on getting them to the table, and I, as soon as I, I hate to give you guys information, it's halfway, when I get a more sure thing to say, then I will, I'll discuss it with you guys. But yeah, we're working getting CHP to the table. We don't have a choice, commissioners, we just don't.
And Mr. Chairman, it all goes back to a higher deductible, too. I mean, I don't know what, I don't have CHP, but the deductible is, I guess, 500, 750?
It's actually, I believe our copayments for primary care are $15, copayment primary, $30.
$300.
30 for specialty care. We actually have the premier CHP group plan, so there is one plan below ours that we could slide down to, which would, you know, possibly be more affordable, however, that would penalize the employers, employees as well, so.
Well, the thing, too, is, is with the higher deductible, it's going to make your premium less, but then, God forbid, the only time that higher deductible would come into play is, God forbid, somebody got in a car accident. The higher deductible, let's face it, it makes your premiums less, but then it, you have to pay for it in the long run, so. It's, and I, I totally agree with Commissioner Amerson and echo his sentiment, but we also fail to realize, too, is with, with the closures of these doctors' offices, we, we're losing, they're losing employees, so those are, and, and Sanala's office is not county employee anyway, but, you know, we're, they employ a lot of our, a lot of our public, a lot of our citizens, and so, you know, these people are without a job now, so it's, it's not only just primary care, it's where are these people going to go work, you know? And that's a sad thing, too, and, and I know Dr. Sanala's going to bigger, big, I won't say better, because who wants to not, who wants to leave Franklin County? But anyway, I know he's doing that, and nobody can bash that either, but it definitely puts us in a bind, but it's like I was saying earlier, you know, primary care or not, anybody can call up the primary care doctor, and they're going to get an appointment three, six months out, and that's why they're going to these ERs. But I agree, CHP, and that's why I said insurance companies are a joke, I feel like they are. Car insurance, health insurance, the whole, everything, homeowner's insurance, it's nothing but a big racket, and we need to come down, we need to start coming down on the insurance companies, and I know it's not just from a, a local level, but a federal level and state level. I know they got lobbyists up there and everything, but, but yes, we need to not limit our people, they need more options of where they can go for their healthcare. They should be able to pick and choose, and I know it's an HMO, but we need to, I, I'm on board with, with whatever we need to do with CHP to get that ball rolling, bring them to the table, as Commissioner Amerson said.
We're working on it. Okay, the conference, FAC conference, that is June, June 25th, they've really opened registration a little early, commissioners, I don't usually do with this early button, and nevertheless, it's open. This is a big summer conference, annual conference, this is one where I encourage every commissioner to go to, so let me know, I'll do this the opposite way, let me know if you're not planning on going, as soon as Courtney gets back to work, I'm going to have to start making arrangements for everybody, okay?
Sounds good.
Good?
I'm going.
This is, this is the COVID conference.
Only when you're there. Only when you're there.
This is the COVID conference.
What? How do I try?
Add me to that list, I'll be there.
The COVID conference, okay.
I'll be there.
I got my shot now.
Put me on that list.
This is a different, isn't this the different, where we, we didn't stay at the Bonnet Creek one last year, did we?
No, we didn't. We weren't at Bonnet Creek.
No, it was different.
Did we?
I don't think we did.
Isn't that the one you had to walk, says?
No, no, this one's different, this one's better, this one's like you go, take, because I remember Commissioner Lockley, bless his heart, he come down the easy way, he was, he beat us all there, because I stayed on the opposite end, but he was right on the, I guess on the higher level, and he just literally took an elevator down, and all the stuff was right there. I think this is a different one than we stayed at last year, and much better, in my opinion.
We had it.
Commissioners, I think I'm scheduled with Dewberry tomorrow, myself, Steve, Angela, and Courtney won't be there, because she's probably won't be back up to start to work on this final draft of this fill ordinance to present to you. I recommend, no motion today, but I recommend that once it's presented to you, you have a workshop first with the public, like we did the last time, then we put it to a public hearing for adoption.
Okay.
So, but hopefully, I can get something to you guys soon, maybe as luck, as early as the next meeting. I'll get a point, boat ramp, you know, Mr. Edwin Lott was here last meeting, I told him I could get him on the February 20th meeting to discuss this, he's going to have a presentation. Comp plan workshop, 3 o'clock today with ARPC, and your next meeting is the 20th, and there Um, comp plan workshop, three o'clock today with ARPC, and your next meeting is the twentieth, and there will be a public hearing scheduled at five o'clock for the Public Road Alley Abandoned Med. Correct, Mr. Schuler? Correct? Right, yes, yes, see, there we go. And that ends my show for the day, commissioners.
Uh, I got a couple of questions for you, sir.
Okay.
Or matters to discuss. And I haven't had the opportunity yet, just with my work schedule, to talk to the people I wanted to talk to about it, but I definitely feel like we need to, uh, use whatever we have to push the envelope on this situation, a couple of them. One of them is, for whatever reason, the, the state which FWC oversees this, our deer hunting time is different than everybody else's. It lasts a couple of weeks longer. And we, we continue to have, now, FWC is tasked with not only managing wildlife, but preserving wildlife and conservation, and all these other things. It's part of what they do. That's not what we're experiencing in Franklin County. We're having residents from other parts of the state, and other states, come and just raid Franklin County, kill stuff, leave it out in the woods. Uh, if, if this continues to happen, three or four years from now, we're not going to have deer in Franklin County. That's how fast they're killing everything that moves. So I don't know what can be done. I don't know if it needs to be on a fu- future agenda. We need to have a discussion about, send it later, maybe talk to, if we have a Dog Hunters Association or anybody we can get in, in with us, to ask FWC or the state to make our season just like everybody else's season. They're the same time. They open right before Thanksgiving. It does not close for two weeks. It goes, and everybody ends at the same time. And maybe we'll have less pressure on our wildlife that is being decimated by people that do not live here, and quite frankly, act like they don't care what the outcome is. Uh, that's just somewhat I've been receiving at the Carcass Canada.
Yep, I will say to you, and I'll, I know we, we have to, I mean, getting close to the hour, so, but I'll say this to you guys. Uh, Commissioner Sanders, and God rest his soul, Commissioner Pucknell, we tried this with FWC. I thought, I thought, I, I might be out of turn with this. I believe they had it on the agenda of a FWC commission meeting, and they turned it down.
They did. But we, we're not through. This county now has a lobbyist.
Yes, that's the advantage we have now.
This county now has a lobbyist. And I, I've never saw, and I've hunted this all my life, I never saw the disrespect to the local hunters that we received this year like we have. And it was not only from the hunters, but it was from some FWC officers, disrespect from it. And my thing is, yeah, my thing is, you know, we were hunting there, and we've always had respect for each other. If you hunt in an area, you hunt in an area. If you hunt in an area, we don't mess with you. If our dog come through, we call you, stuff like that. We had one crew, uh, my crew, had one crew come through that had over twenty trucks with double-decker dog boxes. They come in there, and they told us that they were going to run it. FWC told us that wasn't nothing we could do about that, although we were in that area. We had already looked for the tracks. We had the tracks marked. We had to leave because there were so many of them, because that area can't stand a lot of pressure. And let's just say, the next seven days, you did not get a deer out of those two blocks. Now, that's pitiful. So I talked to some of the local hunters, and Mr. Chairman, they want to come through the, before the boards and discuss this with the condition, with some thoughts of it. You got Florida State Dog Hunters Association. You've got a lot of the members from East Point down here that's members of that. But I think this is something that the Franklin County government, who governs the people, who does the people's work, we need to take a stand, and we need to let FWC know, and I, I'm not just saying it because I'm a hunter, but I saw what they've done over the years. Our deer population is dying. It's dying back. It's not like it used to be. So I agree with you that in the future, we need to have a meeting on this subject with our local hunters.
So do we need to, I know we've got a lot of plans for workshops coming up. Maybe after the first meeting in March, could we try to schedule, and we can talk about this at the next meeting, to schedule a workshop with our local people to know that, so we can hear, and then we can try to move it in a timely fashion.
What I'd like to do, if you don't mind, sir, is to, that you and I schedule a meeting with the lobbyists, like what Commissioner Sanders is saying, and then, after that, then you know, you know, what kind of workshop you want to schedule. Yeah, that's what I would do.
But let's try to do that before our next meeting, I guess, is what I'm trying to.
That's fine, but that's, that's good, Commissioner Sanders.
And, and we need to, Mr. Chairman, we need to make sure that workshop is at, at five, so everybody in the working public can attend.
After hunting season and after high.
Right, right.
So here's the other thing I want to mention, uh, and I don't think there's any action for us today, but Attorney Schuler especially, I want to make sure you're, you're aware of it. Uh, I don't think there's any action for us to take at this time. It seems to kind of hit a standstill. But the city of Bainbridge in Decatur County have been considering, uh, actually, I don't know all the details, so I won't go into it, but basically, they were trying to allow for economic development a monkey breeding facility on the Flint River, which flows into Apalachicola. This, at the, the, the best estimate they have, it was going to double the water and sewer capacity of Decatur County. That's how many monkeys they're talking about in this medical facility. They have since kind of put a pause on it. It seems like it's coming to an end. I just want to state today, on the record, as we're in session here, as a board of county commissioners, our eyes are on it. So if there comes a time we need to engage with you, Attorney Schuler, so we can take steps, because we're down at the bottom of that river they're talking about. So I just want to make sure, you know, and if anybody else wants to weigh in, oh, that's fine, but I want to make sure the public is aware, our public is aware, because they have concerns with it, and the public in Decatur County and everybody in between is aware, Franklin County is keeping an eye on that. And we will do whatever steps it takes to protect our bay.
Well, do, at the next meeting, I know because we're at the end of this one, do you want to let's do a, a resolution and send it to, um, this be Bainbridge and Decatur County?
That would probably be good. It seems to be paused right now, but you never know how this thing will go.
Yeah, you don't never know, because you don't know who's driving the horse on this.
Yeah, you're right. That would probably be a good thing to try to do.
Mr. Chairman, I'm glad you brought that up, because that was, that was, um, something I was going to bring up more like a commissioner comments, but, but I'm, I'm glad you brought it up.
Well, I've brought it between him and the attorney, because it kind of involves, you know what I mean?
Yeah, action.
Also, Mr. Chairman, we need to try to get the state more involved on that. I'm not sure where exactly they're at, or at least find out where they're at with it.
That's true.
Because, you know, the state, especially FWC, is the ones that are sitting there, uh, spending millions of dollars, trying to restore our bay and turn around and have an entity above the, the state line. So, I mean, the state should take more of an active or proactive role in that as well, is my opinion.
But that's, that's all I had. Anyone else have anything for Mr. Moore before we transition to Attorney Schuler? All right, Attorney Schuler, you're up, sir.
Just, just one, I, I labeled it as an information item, but I actually would like for the board to weigh in if y'all have any commentary. But this is for the special use permit that was issued over on McIntyre Road back in the middle of October of twenty twenty-three. Uh, the board did approve, uh, the use of that road by forestry and their independent contractors, uh, with, for the purpose of thinning out some trees that they have, um, testified publicly is for the purpose of, of pine beetle treatment. Uh, I prepared that special use permit and sent it to them just a couple of days after the board approved it, but I didn't fill in the blank when they were supposed to begin and when they're supposed to end, because I, I didn't have that information. Well, on, uh, January the thirtieth, I received an email that ta- tells me that the dates of operation that they're requesting for the special use permit are January the twenty-sixth of this year, running for a twelve-month period. So I just wanted to bring this matter back to the board. It's been several months, and just let y'all know what's going on, and we're getting ready to, you know, finish the processing of the permit and issue it. But I have just so much time in this past, I want to bring it back to the board.
Okay.
For the record.
Yes, ma'am.
For the record, I'm putting it out on record, uh, with all this water, McIntyre Road is in bad shape. The part that goes into Carol Nichols' house is paved, but you go, uh, back the other direction from that, and it's a dirt road. So, um, we need to make sure, I don't know how you can do it, but you need to make sure they're going to upkeep that thing, Mr. Schuler.
Chase them before and afters.
Yeah.
And then, does that the whole account?
Well, and then, and if it gets so bad that Carol and then can't get out of her house, and the other people can't get out of the house, we're going to have problems. Yeah, we're going to have problems.
We can ring them up. I mean, we get phone calls all the time. This, you know, we can share that love, just keep going, say.
They're going to maintain it on a daily basis.
Mr. Chairman. I, I reused, this is the second special use permit the board has issued to forestry, uh, and I'm using the same road maintenance standard in the second, uh, special use permit as I did in the first one. I was reading on the record. Uh, it says, "The aforementioned part of McIntyre Road shall at all times remain passable by a passenger car in the same manner that it is passable immediately prior to the issuance of the special use permit. After the expiration of this, uh, special use permit, that part of McIntyre Road, um, regulated by county order, it's ninety-two dash three, shall be returned to the condition it was in immediately prior to the issuance of the special use permit." So during the use, and then afterwards, if they have to do any cleanup, they'll have to do that as well. Forestry agreed to that, uh, for the first permit, and I, I never received any, you know, adverse commentary from them, so I expect that they, they, they are in full agreement to maintain the road.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question? This, this has happened before. I mean, we have done this.
Yes.
What, what was the experience back then? I mean, did, did the state, did they do their diligence and do it right? I mean, I mean, I'm just trying to get an idea about what, what the habit is, I guess, is more.
I was not boots on the ground. I mean, I, I don't know. I mean, I'm, nothing's coming to mind that, that particularly seemed bad, but.
Well, if it was before you came back, and then Commissioner, or Chairman Jones, you should, you should have had some experience with it. I'm just curious.
Well, yeah, so at that time, the, trying to find the best way to say this, the, the, uh, commissioner of the district was, uh, acutely aware of what was going on. So it kind of took some, uh, discussion at the board level to make sure that we were pushing back, and they, and it was being taken care of.
Okay. I'm just trying to figure out if there's a good relationship there, or if we're just kind of.
With Commissioner Sanders in that district, she's going to make a phone call, she needs to.
She'll be home, I'm quite sure.
So that, I, I guess that's what I'm trying to say. So, so I, I think it'd be well taken care of. She will call them in the question.
I'm just trying to get an idea of what the, what the relationship in the past has been, you know, and I, I, that's all.
It's not a bad relationship. It's just, it's not necessarily was a bad relationship as much as it was no relationship.
Okay.
That's why I never say.
Not known.
Yeah, that's why I never say it. Uh, before we leave you, Attorney Schuler, because it might involve you, uh, we're going to have discussions with DEP later this week. So there's this back and forth about whether we need to actually ask DEP to remove the core from the export permit, because it might actually prevent us from doing some of what we are required to do. But we should have a que- that answer when we talk to DEP to bring it up the next week, and that's what I'm making sure you're aware, make sure the public is aware. All right, so, uh, we need to ask for Attorney Schuler. All right, so we're about to recess and then reconvene at three o'clock, correct?
And we could let, let the public know that it's the same zoom.
Right.
We're going to pause it and reconso- just you log into the same one that's on the agenda for this afternoon, three o'clock workshop.
And after we get through with the, the public workshop today, we have it on the agenda, do Commissioner Collins.
Yes.
We will recess.